Well, everybody just asking my microphone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Gus, we can hear you.
Good evening and welcome to the closed session meeting of November 4th, 2025. I will open this meeting at 5:01. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Voight?
Here.
Mayor Lara?
Here.
Public comments. This meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. Mr. Cole, do we have any public comments for items on the closed session agenda?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Thank you. Ms. Phaedra, can you please read the items for discussion in closed session?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. Mayor Pro Tem Voight is going to declare a conflict prior to me reading the titles.
Thank you. Yeah, for item B2, I'll be recusing myself out of an abundance of caution as my employer is my source of income. And so one of the items on closed session may affect my employer. So we're still in the kind of fighting stage.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the public, the council will adjourn to closed session to consider item B1 through B4. B1 is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54-956.9D1. City of Beaumont versus Caesar Aguilar Riverside Court Case Number CBR 12406657. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 is item B2. The city designated representative is city manager Elizabeth Gibbs and administrative service director Carrie Mendoza. The employee organizations are the police managers SEIU, Police Officers Association, managers professional and technical, and unrepresented employee classifications administrative services director, chief of police, city engineer, public works director, community development director, community services director, deputy city manager, director of water reclamation, economic development director, and finance director. With respect to item B3 on the closed session agenda, it is conference with legal counsel. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 or D3. One case. And finally, item B4, public employee appointment employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. Title interim city manager. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Phaedra. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
And good evening. Thank you for your patience this evening. Appreciate that. I will call the regular session to order at 6:36. Have roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Mayor Protem Voight?
Here.
Mayor Laura?
Here. Ms. Pedro, can we please have a report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no action to report with respect to any of the closed session items B1 through B4.
Thank you. No request for excused absences. This evening we'll have the invocation by Pastor Eddie Gonzalez and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protem Voight. Will you please rise?
Let's pray. Lord, we're so thankful. We're so grateful for this opportunity to be gathered together as friends, as neighbors, as citizens of this great city and also this great country. We're grateful, Lord, that you've allowed us this opportunity to work together and to call upon your name for grace and for wisdom, for understanding and for knowledge. We're asking you, Lord, that you would cover all of us with your grace and your spirit. Help us, Lord, to be cooperative and to treat one another with respect and dignity. We pray for your understanding, Lord, above all things, and your kindness and compassion, Lord, that you would help us if we reach out to you for instruction, for guidance. For everything that we do, God, we want it to please you. We want to be the best things that can be done for all of us as a whole. We ask all these things, Lord, with grateful heart. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Elizabeth, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We do, Mayor. I would like to pull item G7 off the agenda and bring that back at a future meeting. And I would like council to consider hearing item J8 after the three CFD formation. Our city engineer needs to catch a flight tonight, and with the TSA lines, we don't want him to miss that plane. So we'd like to get him out of here quickly.
All right. I'm okay with that adjustment. Do we have a consensus on that? Okay. So we'll be chatting here as soon as we can, Robert. Depending on your PowerPoint length. Okay, that brings us to item E. Announcements, recognition, proclamations, correspondence. Item E1 is recycling all-star recognitions. It was presented by Doug Ten. There he is.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff and community. I think most of you know me. I'm Doug Tony from Waste Management WM. But the ones who haven't met me yet, we will. I serve as a public sector manager for the city of Beaumont. And thank you so much for having us here tonight. Tonight is about celebrating a true team effort as we recognize the city of Beaumont's recycling all-star team effort as we recognize the city of Beaumont's recycling all-stars. Before we hand out the award, I want to share a couple of fun facts about the recycling work that we all do together here in Beaumont. So we are especially excited to make these recognitions leading up to America Recycles Day, which is on November 15. It's the only nationally recognized day dedicated to promoting and celebrating recycling. So by that, every week here in the city, we service over 18,000 residential customers. And then also, we service about 400 commercial customers. And we do that in the rain and the shine, and also those occasional Santa Ana winds where the bins or the carts are moving all over the place. So the numbers for this year through September are truly impressive and show how dedicated this community is. We've collected almost 14 million pounds of organic waste and green waste. So that's it's a tremendous effort, especially since organic waste continue to be the largest waste stream in the state of California. We've also collected around 8 million pounds of traditional recyclable materials so far. That's like cardboard and paper, plastic bottles and glass jars. These numbers are only possible because of the dedicated people, and that is precisely why we are here tonight, to recognize the resident and the commercial partner who have been setting the gold standard for recycling excellence. Okay, this these all-stars were chosen weren't chosen by a complicated algorithm. They were chosen by the folks who see the carts and bins every single day, your WM drivers. They're the final judges. So here's our criteria: consistency, how often they put out recyclables for pickup; contamination control, make sure that recycling materials is clean; and then cleanliness, those containers and enclosures are clean and tidy. So here we go. Without further delay, here's your two recipients. The first award for the best residential customer goes to Mr. and Mrs. Robert Lindwall. I got to say a few words about this because the drivers love seeing their carts out because they're always clean, always sorted correctly, and always out on time. We could say they're model recycling discipline. But I heard that the kids have a lot to do with your recycling habits at the house. Okay.
All right. And let's do it. We can go up there.
Mayor and council, I'd like to just update you. Gianna Lindwall is one of our lead public safety dispatchers. She works at the police department.
Okay, our next award for the best commercial customer goes to Farmer Boys. I spoke to the general manager. She couldn't make it. She has some staffing issues. So I will go over there tomorrow, take the award, the proclamation, and then we'll get a picture and we'll send it over.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
So bigger Christmas present on my trash bins doesn't help, right?
Never know.
Okay, next is the GFPA Triple Crown Award presented by Ms. Jennifer Eustation, the Triple Crown Queen of Beaumont.
Well, thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my honor to announce that the city of Beaumont has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Triple Crown Award for the second consecutive year. This is an extraordinary accomplishment that places Beaumont among a select group of agencies nationwide, recognized for excellence in financial reporting and transparency. For last year's award, we were one of only 20 cities out of 483 statewide to receive this prestigious award. So the Triple Crown Award is achieved only when an agency earns all three of the GFPA's highest honors within a single fiscal year, and that's the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Award for Outstanding Achievement, Popular Annual Financial Reporting, and Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Receiving all three awards demonstrates a strong commitment to fiscal transparency, accountability, and a high-quality communication with our residents, businesses, and stakeholders. I would like to extend my appreciation to city manager and all city departments for their support, particularly during the development of the budget, budget narratives, performance measures, and timely submission of year-end data. These recognitions are not achieved by the finance department alone. They are the result of successful cross-departmental collaboration. However, I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible dedication, professionalism, and the hard work of the finance team, some of them who are here in the audience this evening.
Nice.
Their commitment to meeting rigorous national standards, strengthening our financial processes, and continuously improving our reporting practices is what truly makes this level of recognition possible. This award reflects countless hours of effort, attention to detail, and a deep sense of pride in serving our committee with transparency and integrity. On behalf of the finance department, we are grateful for the council's continued support of strong financial management practices and for fostering a culture that values accountability and excellence. So thank you and congratulations to the entire organization on this achievement. Our medallions and our awards have little crowns, too, so that's even more exciting.
Nice.
Do the picture?
We'll do another one tomorrow.
Okay, sure.
Do you have us hold our ones?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we invite the team to come through?
Yeah, of course.
We are ready. We need to hold. All right. One, two, and three. One, two, three. Hold that. One, two, and three. Thank you.
You know, Jennifer, I just wanted to tell you, coming from where Councilmember White and I have come from 11 years ago, I'm just so proud every time that we get an award like this. It shows our dedication to finding fiscal responsibility and transparency. So thank you and your team for all the hard work. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item E3, Veterans Day Regional Site Dedication. Mr. Doug Story and Julie Van?
And Julie Van Hook.
And Julie Van Hook, yes.
Good evening, council. I'm pleased to share that the city of Beaumont has been officially recognized as a national Veterans Day regional site, which is a pretty big accomplishment. We are one of just 56 communities across 28 states selected to host the VA-recognized Veterans Day observancies honoring our nation's heroes. So earlier this year, we submitted an application to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to highlight Beaumont's strong tradition of honoring veterans and to formally recognize our area's parade and ceremony. And after review, Beaumont was selected, which is a pretty big accomplishment. We were selected this summer and included among some distinguished communities nationwide, and of those is our neighbors in Palm Springs. So it's pretty good. There's only four in California alone. And you can also see, there we go. You can see this is the VA's regional website here for sites nationwide. And it kind of gives an overview of how the selection takes part. And then it lists areas by state. And here we are there as the city of Beaumont listed.
Nice.
Yeah. And this was kind of a wish list item a little bit ago. Took some navigating to figure out how to apply, but we got there and we're selected. So we're honored to join our neighbors. And at this time, I'd like to invite Doug Story, Director of Community Services, to the podium.
And this event is truly a community effort, and there were some great partners in helping us achieve this specific award from the VA, but also just building up our parade and our ceremony. Our friends and partners over at the VFW have played just a great role for us and have been amazing partners. And then just so many different organizations from our community. And I really want to continue to invite, we're still accepting applications for a couple more days if you would like to participate in our parade, which is next Tuesday on Veterans Day at 10:00 a.m. Coming down Beaumont Avenue. We are still accepting applications if anyone wants to get in. But I want to invite the community to come out as well to enjoy the parade and then the ceremony, which will be held right out in front of City Hall when the parade is over. And so it's just a great opportunity. It's a very proud opportunity for me and something I'm very proud of, just to have a community that is so supportive of our veterans and our veteran community. And so this is a great honor for our staff, but really is a great honor for our community as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our public comment period. Item F, any one person may address city council on any matter not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a form, a public comment form provided at the back table, and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits city council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Nicole, do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
Yes, I have three in person. First one is going to be Michael Di Matteo.
Hello. My name is Michael Di Matteo. I've lived in Beaumont for over 50 years. I'm a retired law enforcement officer in the place in Pride of the District of California. On August 21, 2025, my car was towed for allegedly violating California Vehicle Code 22651O for having it been expired for over six months and parked on a city street. The following day, I went to the Beaumont Police Department and talked to the on-duty watch commander and presented him with a current registration, and he subsequently waived the $175 administration fee for me to get my vehicle. However, nobody waived the $572 fee that I had to pay to the tow company to get my car. He then claimed that my car had been parked over 72 hours under Section 22651K. And because I was familiar with the policies and procedure, I asked him if a tow card, or if my tires had been chalked, or if the tow card was placed on my vehicle. He said that there was a tow card, but he did not give me a copy of it. When I picked up my vehicle, the owner of the tow company told me that his tow truck driver had informed city officials that my vehicle was currently registered, and they stored it anyway. When I checked, there was no tow card and no chalk marks and no notice of any kind on my vehicle. I filed a citizen's complaint, and I found out that the city admitted that no tow card had been placed on my vehicle. Through a Public Records Act request, I learned that Policy 524 has not been enforced for at least the past two years, meaning vehicles may have been towed without notice or due process. This section states it requires officers to chalk tires and leave a 72-hour notice. Ignoring it violates the public trust. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled that taking someone's vehicle is a serious deprivation of property. I later met with or spoke with the operations captain, who told me that the chief of police wanted to meet with me to try to discuss this issue. This captain was aware of the fact that I had counsel. But when I arrived with my attorney, the captain said that the chief would refuse to speak with me because my attorney was present. If I hadn't known the department's own rules and from my prior experience, I would have paid $880 to get my car back. When officials ignore their own policies and still enforce or force citizens to pay, that borders on extortion, even though it is a governmental agency. Citizens deserve fairness, transparency, and accountability. Thank you for your time. You have my information on the tow car from the slip. If anybody wants to talk to me about this, that's fine. The other issue I have is that I filed a citizen's complaint, and it's still under review, and it's been over two months. It doesn't take that long to work out a citizen's complaint. And as far as I can tell, this policy is still on your policy manual, and I don't know if it's being enforced or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Shane Sissens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shane Sissens. I'm a city employee and a member of SCIU 721 Union. For the past 19 years, I've worked for the city of Beaumont. In that time I've been here, I've witnessed a lot, so much so, I have a few employees, and we're ready to start making a television show. But I'm here to discuss a future item with you, employee benefits and healthcare. So SCIU employees are the backbone of the city. We all respond to events that are both known and unknown that occur in the city. When people need to get around, when we were under global shutdown, we were there to ensure that citizens were able to get to hospitals, grocery stores, and the like. Streets were kept clean, sewer facilities continued to run, and online processes were created overnight so services were not interrupted. When there are car accidents, we're involved with cleanup, traffic control, and in the craziest circumstances of a man who lost control of his vehicle doing rooster tails in the rain, we were there to comfort his son because his dad wouldn't wake up after the accident. When someone was stabbed in the neck and needed medical attention, guess who was there to call for aid, block traffic, and assist with first responders? Yes, you guessed it, SCIU employees. When it comes to employees working in this beautiful city, it's not an easy task sometimes. But do you know who suffers the most? It's the employees' families. They are put on the back burner while the employee is setting up and working one of our great events that we do have. They're the ones who don't get to spend time with someone because that someone is dedicated to the city of Beaumont and its residents. It's nice to have medical coverage, but at what cost to the employee? It's not getting any cheaper for anyone, especially with the families at work to keep the city elevated. We ask that you do the right thing in the future. Don't choose the smaller amount just because you want to save a dollar. Choose the reasonable amount because you care about the employees holding the city up. In short, unfortunately, it puts employees between a rock and a hard place. Employees are having to make decisions to risk a catastrophic event or spending money they don't have versus telling their kids, "Sorry, couldn't afford to get those snacks you wanted for school." You'd be surprised at how many city employees qualify for government assistance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Stephen Pollak.
Hello. I'm Stephen Pollak. Very nice to meet you. Honorable Mayor, city council members of the city of Beaumont. I'm here representing Corporate Credit, Inc. I'm here to bring an issue to your attention before it escalates further and potentially puts the city at significant legal and financial risk. The city has two battery systems, which were installed by Tesla and financed by Corporate Credit, Inc., also known as CCI. Both of these systems are already installed and operational. No city funds were required to be paid for these projects. The primary funding came from state and federal incentives, with cost overrun risk being borne by CCI and no incremental risk to the city. In addition, per the executed contract, CCI is indemnifying the city to give additional protection and comfort. In March of 2023, then-Mayor Martinez executed an addendum to the purchase agreement where the city agreed to work with CCI to pursue available federal tax credits to offset the significant additional cost increases due to COVID and related impacts. Since then, CCI has also been able to qualify for additional bonus adders, which would increase the amount of tax credits available, which could be then further shared proportionally with the city, again, while fully indemnifying the city. CCI has spent hundreds of hours, provided documentation, legal references, and even connected CCI's tax council with city staff, but to no avail. city staff, but to no avail. As a professional courtesy, I will limit my comments on the manner in which your city has been represented by city staff. CCI has requested but been denied the ability to bring this matter formally to the city council. I'm here as a final effort to move forward towards a mutually beneficial outcome while the opportunity still exists. CCI has been transparent and provided documentation and answers to every reasonable question and relevant request made by the city, which we have also documented. We have not been presented, presented with any data or evidence of wrongdoing on our side, yet we have been on the receiving end of many troubling insinuations and unwarranted accusations, which ironically have demonstrated a lack of understanding of how these tax laws work. We find ourselves in a frustrating situation where the city is unwilling to fulfill its obligations. Worth noting, CCI has collaborated with other municipalities under the same structure for similar battery projects and successfully filed and received tax refunds from the IRS. But that data point has been ignored. We need the city council's engagement and support if we are going to find a mutually beneficial path forward. Prior to this November 15th, we still have time to review and execute the amendments, receive more tax credits, as well as prepare and submit all tax filings. This will ensure the city has met its obligations, received two battery systems using no direct city funds, and helped recover costs incurred on these projects. After November 15th, it is too late. The deadline will pass and there's no ability to retroactively file these tax submissions. The damages will be incurred and it is in the order of potentially millions of dollars in damages, leaving CCI no other option except legal.
Need you to wrap up.
Legal. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. Except for, for legal options. We would really like to figure out a way to make this work. We are open to working together, but we need the city council's support and engagement.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
One caller.
For items not on the agenda?
I apologize for the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item G, consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled for discussion of the consent?
Mayor and members of the city council, this is Gus Romo, your deputy city manager. There is one item G9. We do not recommend pulling it, but we just want to make sure that you're aware that the fiscal impact section was revised from the first reading. In your report, it identifies that there is a fiscal impact needing 200 sign installations at an estimated cost of $300 each, resulting in a total project expenditure of $60,000. However, if additional time is needed for purchase and installation of the signage, it will not affect the enforcement of this ordinance per legal counsel. So I'm not recommending pulling this item, only if you have additional discussion item, or discussion questions.
Okay.
And that's all I have on that item, sir.
Can you give us that cost one more time, please?
Yes, it's a projected expenditure of $60,000. And this funding will be drawn from the Public Works Operational Budget. The installation is anticipated to be completed over a year once it's been started.
Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Any items to be pulled? If not, we have a motion with the recommended adjustment as identified on G9.
Mayor, can we pull G9 for further discussion?
Sure. Right, G7 is, is.
We pulled as well.
Been pulled.
I'll make a motion to move and approve items G1 through G6, G8, and G10 through 12.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, before we do roll call, I believe we do have a public comment on the line for a consent calendar item.
Do, what, what item would that be?
Benny, do we have a caller on the line for consent calendar item?
We have one caller for G3.
Do you want to hear that before your motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Okay, go ahead and send it through. Caller, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Go right ahead.
Yes, good evening, city council. This is Ron Roy on Hogan Drive in Fairway Canyon. And I'm calling about item G3. The first thing I wanted to ask is if the Public Works Department or the Department of the City take a photograph of the exposed slope, of the graded slope that was part of the repair. I think they spent about a half million dollars for the grading. And the person, the company who did the grading did a marvelous job, really incredible. But I'm starting to see because of the wind, seasonal rain, you're starting to see fissures in the slope. And our heavy rains are around the corner. That whole slope could give way, and you could even lose half of the fairway on the fifth fairway. So it's a very dangerous issue. I contacted and emailed the Public Works Department with suggested erosion control. You know, you can use things like mulch plant ground cover, erosion control blanket or geal textile seems like a good way to go. But, you know, it's not done. And that is a huge surface area. It could be a couple thousand square feet of exposed slope. So please take a photograph of the slope itself. You'll see it's not done. And please get some kind of erosion control as soon as you can before the seasonal rains. Thank you.
Thank you. So no other comments on consent, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll, roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Okay, G9.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on G9 as we had not previously understood that we would need to have the installation of signage. Do we have a proposed plan for the signage, where it's going to go, where it has to be, and what that looks like? It looks like there are approximately 200 signs. How did we come about that number, that sort of thing?
Sure. So it, it is an estimate. Staff took a look at locations in the ordinance that requires signage to be placed at all known. I think it's heavily used bike paths. We have quite a bit in the City of Beaumont. So each, each of those bike paths has segments that need to be notified. So with some analysis performed, the 200 signs isn't, is an estimate to satisfy the ordinance.
And from legal's opinion, based off of a preliminary, that's sufficient?
Yeah, the purpose of the signage is just to provide notice, particularly as people are transitioning from one city to the next, or as are utilizing bike lanes to put them on notice of the helmet requirements.
Okay, so essentially entrances within the city where they're transitioning from one city to the other, or one jurisdiction from the other, and noticeably along paths?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right. I have no further questions.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Will there be any force enforcement of those in an area where there's not yet a sign posted? The reason why I ask is they said it could take up to, to a year. Do we have any plan with that, or Chief answered that one?
The idea, sir, is not to have proactive enforcement. In a sense, we're not going out there putting people on the streets, looking for people without helmets. But it is to identify the risk of liability for anybody riding without a helmet. That's first and foremost.
Okay, appreciate it. Chief, I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
Do you know the question? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Martinez?
And just a quick question as far as budget. So the budget was set before this ordinance was brought to us. So is the $60,000 a reasonable amount for your budget? Or is it going to significantly impact something else? Because it'll take 12 months, it'll hit two separate fiscal year budgets. I, I do believe that it's absorbable in our current budget. However, it will displace, like hammers, nails. Harbor freight it is. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion. I'll make a motion to waive the full, the, the full second reading and adopt by title only in ordinance of the city council, the City of Beaumont, California, adding chapter 10.35, use of protective helmets for operations of human powered and electrical assisted devices to the Beaumont Municipal Code with the adjustment in the, the budget as discussed.
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. Brings us to item H, Youth Council Report?
No report, Mayor.
All right. And item I, Public Hearings. Item I1, Public Hearing to Approve First Reading of an Ordinance for Truck Restrictions and Commercial Vehicle Enforcement. Staff report by Mr. Darren Usher.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's item is a public hearing for the first reading of an ordinance that would prohibit trucks over seven tons of gross vehicle weight for operating within certain city streets. This ordinance is a continuation of the city's work that began in the adoption of the 2040 General Plan back in December of 2020, which established a framework for a truck priority network that supports industrial growth while minimizing impacts on residential neighborhoods and sensitive receptors. The intent of this item is to improve safety and mobility in residential areas, reduce pavement wear and noise, and align with the city's plus land use policies and Assembly Bill 98, which adjusts protection of sensitive receptors like schools and parks. This ordinance also strengthens our efforts of enforcement by establishing a clear and legal framework with enabling a $500 administrative citation for unauthorized used truck parking and operation of non-designated routes. Future signage and out routes expenses are covered by Public Works Operational Budget. And while some short term citation revenue may incur, our primary focus is on achieving compliance and improving safety for residents and businesses. Staff recommends that city council waive the first full reading and approve the ordinance and accompanying resolution as presented. Staff is available for any questions or comments the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing at 7:11, 7:13, excuse me. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I will close public comments at 7:13 and open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, just a comment I wanted to point out. And I'm certainly that this number will go down, but I think it proves the point and what we're doing here is, is a good idea, that there were 6,864 citations that were written. So we can clean this up and keep the trucks in the right location. I think it's going to be a benefit to everybody within the city. So I certainly support this. Thank you.
Do you know the comments? We have.
Mayor, can I have one minute, please?
Yes, please.
There's a reference to a code citation in the staff report, and it is 1.17.200, and it should be .100. There's a section in our code that erroneously references .200, and that doesn't exist. So we're going to come back at a future meeting with that code change that it's referencing, if that makes sense.
And that references also in Exhibit A, which is the ordinance. So when you introduce, if you introduce the ordinance, it would be with the modification of 1.17.200 would be, instead be 1.17.100.
Can you identify that, where that's at in Attachment A?
Yes, it's under section 10.52.050, the second page, third line down.
Oh, I see it. Okay, thank you.
So for clarification, when we make the recommended, recommended motion, do we need to identify the modifications as discussed?
Correct.
If there are no other comments, I'll make the motion. Make a motion to waive the first full reading and approve by title only an ordinance of the city council, the City of Beaumont, California, adding a new chapter 10.52 with modifications as discussed to the Beaumont Municipal Code containing truck restrictions to designated streets within the city limits, consistent with California Vehicle Code, section 35701, and adopt a resolution by title only, a resolution of the city council, the City of Beaumont, California, establishing a $500 administrative citation fine for unauthorized commercial truck parking and operation on non-designated truck routes.
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes. That brings us to item I2, Public Hearing to Approve the Issuance of Local Agency Reserve Bonds, Series 2025B for Improvement Areas 1 and 2, Community Facilities District Number 23, 2023-1, Fairway Canyon. Staff report by Triple Crown.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Before you is a authorization for issuance of bonds. And we do have our financing team here this evening. Tom Jacobs from Stiefel and Brandon Kefory from UFI. And we also have Mike Bush from UFI on Zoom for any questions. So I'll go ahead and pass it to them for a presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Brandon Kefory, I'm with UFI. We're the municipal advisor on the transaction. I'm going to take us through the first part of the presentation and then turn it over to Brian Forbath from Stradling, who will cover the item subject to approval. And then Mr. Jacob will cover the financing summary. So before you tonight is an item for the 2025B bonds. This is a proposed issuance for improvement areas 1 and 2 of CFD 2023-1. I have a bit of detail here on the district just by way of background. This district was formed in June of 2023. It's located in the western portion of the city, west of the I-10, north of the Oak Valley Parkway. Improvement Area 1 consists of two tax zones. You can see on the map, there, the shaded yellow parts, sort of on the non-contiguous portion of the, of the district, that's being developed by D.R. Horton into 132 homes. Improvement Area 2 is located in the center part of the district, is being developed by Meritage into 287 homes. Both improvement areas have very high conveyance to individuals. If you look in the table in the bottom right corner, you can see in Improvement Area 1, there are 131 homes that are conveyed as of the data value. That last remaining home has actually, is scheduled to close this month, as we understand it from the developer. And Improvement Area 2 similarly had 271 that were conveyed as of September 5th. And we understand that the remaining homes are actually, all have been completed, and they're also scheduled to close in November. A bit about the financing. So the 25B bonds are proposed to be issued by the Beaumont Public Improvement Authority. Under this structure, the authority will acquire each improvement area's bond issue or local obligation. The city has utilized the structure previously for refinancings, and this is the first use of the structure for a new money issuance. This proposed financing has a number of advantages by doing it this way. It will strengthen the credit, reduce issuance costs, and increase investor interest, mainly because you have a larger transaction size to essentially spread the costs and attract investors. At formation. At formation, the improvement areas had not exceed power amounts that were set, 3.5 million for Improvement Area One and 11 million for Number Two. And based on current market conditions, we're proposing to issue bonds below that at around 2 million for the first improvement area and seven for Improvement Area Two. This will be one new, one series of new money bonds for each, and additional parity bonds are only for refinancing purposes. Similar to other CFDs, the structure here will be such that the local obligations will be secured by net taxes that provide 110 coverage on the annual debt payments and at annual admin expenses. And it's important to note that the special taxes here do not escalate, so it's a level tax through the life of the bonds. And lastly, the authorized facilities to be financed with the bond proceeds will include improvements that will benefit the district, including road and park improvements. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Brian Forbath to just walk through the next section on the items to be approved.
Good evening, Mayor Laura. Councilmembers, Brian Forbath could be here with you this evening. Quite a lot of standing in line to, to vote, but but, thank you. So a little different here than we've done in, in the last couple of meetings. As, as Brandon mentioned, this is a new money CFD, and so there, we have to have this public hearing tonight. As part of that, there is a city resolution with you all wearing the city council hats that make a finding of significant public benefit that's required underneath the Melrose Law for the JPA to issue the, the bond. So that's one of the resolutions that's before you tonight. The second resolution is the city council wearing your CFD 2023-1 hat, serving as legislative body of that Community Facilities District, and authorizing the issuance of bonds by CFD 2023-1. And the third part of the Triple Crown tonight for you all is wearing the, the PIA hat, or crown, I guess we could say. And that is the authorizing the issuance of the Financing Authority bonds, the amount of $10 million, which will be used to acquire the bonds of the CFD, of the local obligations, we call them, that are issued by the CFDs. So with that, those are the three resolutions, the three actions that are before you tonight. And with that, there's a whole set of documents that are in your packets that get approved. Most importantly, there's a preliminary official statement. That's the offering statement for the bonds, the subject federal securities laws that we vetted and have gone through the diligence process that's required by the city's disclosure policies that were put in place with the SEC. There's also the Authority Indenture Trust. That's essentially the contract that city enters into, or excuse me, that the JPA enters into with the bond owners that sets forth the terms of the authority bonds. And then there's the bond indentures for the local obligations, which sets forth the terms of the, each of the improvement area bonds that are being purchased. Then there's the bond purchase agreement, which is the contract pursuant to which the bonds will be sold to Stiefel Nicholas, who will then market them out to the public at interest rates that are appropriate. And then finally, there's a continuing disclosure certificate, which sets forth certain obligations to provide annual financial information to the bond market to keep investors in tune. And with that, I will pass it off to Tom, talk a little about the financing details and schedule.
Great, thank you, Brian, and good evening, councilmembers. Tom Jacob from Stiefel. So as Brandon mentioned a little bit earlier, we're utilizing a structure that the city typically uses for refinancings. We, the Public Improvement Authority will be issuing the 2025B bonds, and those will be secured by debt service, what we call debt service revenues from the local obligations. So the two series of bonds issued by each improvement area one and improvement area two. Those bonds are in turn secured by special taxes levied on property within the two improvement areas. And as Brandon mentioned, these are, are flat taxes. Over time, they're leveled. They do not increase. And the special, the bonds will be structured so that those taxes will provide 110% coverage on the annual debt payments. Here you can see some statistics associated with the 25B bonds, based on relatively current market conditions, a little over 9 million, an average true interest cost or average borrowing rate of just over 5% for a 30-year bond issue. Here we have the estimated cost of issuance. As Brandon mentioned earlier, one of the benefits of utilizing this structure is that it does lead to lower costs of issuance. And so here in the schedule here, we have the breakdown of the cost of issuance for the 2025B bonds. So it's just over $400,000. We thought it may be helpful to compare this to a hypothetical situation if we issued two series of bonds instead of one series of bonds. And in that situation, the aggregate cost would be nearly $500,000. So by utilizing this structure, we're saving just over $93,000. And you can see some of the proposed reductions by firm Bond and Disclosure Council. By utilizing this structure, you get a $20,000 savings, the advisor $20,000, the underwriter Stiefel $40,000, and the appraiser by $13,000 as well. Last but not least, the financing schedule. So assuming that council approves the bond issue this evening, our goal is to post the preliminary official statement or make it available to prospective investors tomorrow or in the next couple of days, and jump into the market next week, assuming market conditions remain favorable, and settle or close the transaction a couple of weeks later, that first week of December. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as the rest of the financing team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:27. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I will close public comment hearing at 7:27 and open it up for council discussion. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, I have a question. So this is being paid through the, the property taxes from the homeowners. Are they currently being assessed that right now? And is, and is this an example of a pay-go, if I understand that correctly? Am I on the right track?
Yes, so, so when the homeowners move in and building permits start getting pulled, the taxes are levied because we don't want property owners to be living in their houses and then all of a sudden get a tax bill like a year or two after they've moved in. So the taxes have been levied since building permits have been pulled. And those, the amount, that's the pay-go, which you're correct, is going into the transaction as, as part of the transaction. It'll go into, it'll be funds available to pay debt service on the bonds, and then also to pay debt, excuse me, to pay, to pay debt service on the first period of the, of the bonds, then also to reimburse the developer. But then, once the bonds are issued, there will be no more pay-go going forward.
Okay. And then this falls in line with what the homeowner expected at the time of
Correct.
Purchase contract and closing escrow and all that.
And even better, now that the bonds will be issued, the taxes will actually be able to be lowered about 10% because we won't have to levy at the maximum taxes anymore. We'll just levy what's required to pay debt service on the bonds.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Voight?
Well, actually, Councilmember Finn answered, asked both, a, a majority of my questions. Good job. But is this the only other place we're doing multiple improvement areas in our current CFDs?
So, yeah, yes, that's the only one that's currently outstanding right now. I, I mean, there was, excuse me, I'm spacing on the retirement community. There was multiple improvement areas there where we issued over time, but Fairway Canyon has just these two, these, just these two improvements. Shane, there's not a third improvement area, right? Yeah.
But I mean, since we, since, say, 2016, we haven't done multiple improvement areas?
Not that I can, not that I can remember, Councilmember Voight.
And so remind me why we decided to do improvement areas here?
So my recollection of the facts of that are the developer came to the city. There's sort of two separate distinct areas. There are potentially two different product mixes, and the developer was going to potentially sell one of the tracks to a different builder, and the development timeframes weren't necessarily going to be on the same schedule. And so they wanted to keep it separated at the time.
As opposed to doing two different CFDs?
Which, in all practicality, is the same thing.
Right. I just, improvement areas just bring back nightmares to me. Do you mind bringing up the, I think it was the second page of the first part of the presentation?
This one?
Uh, next page. That one. Let me make sure that's the right page. Go to the next one, please. Yeah, explain that, the, the last paragraph, the last bullet point. 2025 bonds will be secured by debt service from the local obligations, and local obligations will be secured by net taxes. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? It's sort of fuzzy to me.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So this is just like what we did on the last refunding, pooled refunding we have. So the authority bonds are essentially, the proceeds of the authority bonds are used to acquire the CFD bonds. And so the authority bonds are secured by payments of principal and interest on the CFD, the local improvementary bonds. The improvementary bonds are paid by the levy of net taxes, levy of special taxes on property owners in the district, if that makes sense.
It does. And then I thought there was a part where we were being told, look, are expected to be issued in power amounts of 2 million and 7 million, and additional parity bonds for refunding purposes only. Explain what that means.
So in other words, there's no ability to issue parity bonds for new money, for, to raise additional proceeds to finance infrastructure or to reimburse the developer. The, the, the construct of additional parity bonds for refunding purposes only is, in certain instances, and it hasn't been that common lately, but there, there have been instances where, for whatever reason, economics, market conditions at the time, where only a portion of the bonds will get refunded. And so you want the ability issue to refund a portion of the bonds, which will be on parity with the existing bonds. And that's why it says parity bonds for refunding purposes only.
But that's refunding in the future.
In the future, correct. Yeah, 10 years from now, after the call date. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, two questions. One, you gave us some of the, the pros for having this type of new issuance. One, is there any cautions or drawbacks we need to be aware of? And number two, why hasn't it been done before?
So I think it just sort of happens to answer that these two developments sort of came together at the same time. And quite frankly, that they're both sort of relatively small that was added together. I mean, you know, one of them is only 113 units, one was 287. So I think the stars sort of aligned that they've sort of both got built out at the same time, and also that they're two separate developers. They didn't come to you in advance. You know, they could have asked a while ago to get reimbursed. And they didn't. They just sort of waited. And again, I, I think this was just your financial advisor and your underwriting team looking and working with staff to realize, hey, there's an opportunity to probably save a few bucks if we could combine these together, so it made sense to do so.
And you don't see any cautions?
No, no. This is, again, this is directly akin to what you all have done numerous occasions in refunding all of the various CFDs. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or motion?
I will move to make the recommended action for I two.
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Do I have to read them all?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item J one, Formation of CFD 25-1, Fairway Canyon 4C. Staff report by Ms. Chetapuri Station.
Let me pull up another presentation for you, and let's see. And Shane, I'll pass it over to Shane Spicer. He's our CFD consultant.
My watch is alerting me to my stress level going up.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I hope that's a, a positive thing. Shane Spicer here, Spicer Consulting, City's Special Tax Consultant. Pleasure to be here to present the trifecta of CFDs coming forward for Fairway Canyon 4C. Excuse me. So this presentation I'm going to be giving, but also have Brian Forbath here as well to be able to handle any of the technicalities and legal matters. So what we're going to present is the one presentation for three items on the action items list, J one, J two, and J three. The proposal before you is for Fairway Canyon 4C by Meritage Homes. We just issued bonds on their previous phase of this project area. 4C is requesting the creation of these new CFDs to fund infrastructure, public safety, and maintenance services for their 366 single-family residential development. The request follows the CFD program, in which you may recall, we did talk about in September 2nd during the workshop regarding the ability for the city to take advantage of CFD program to not just fund facilities, but also to provide for services for both public safety and maintenance services that are not necessarily directly tied to a infrastructure financing request. So there are three coordinated CFDs that are going to be presented here, 2025-1 Facilities for Public Infrastructure, 2025-S for Public Services for Police, Fire, and Ambulance Services, and 2025-M for Maintenance Services. These three services, two services and facilities tax are not uncommon to facility CFDs that have previously been formed. In fact, the one that just issued bonds also has these same services built into that CFD. So there's no difference in the, the services that are being requested to be financed along with the Facilities District. Again, as a result of our workshop, the idea here is that adopting these CFDs and future annexable projects are allowing for growth to pay for growth and safeguarding the city's general fund. A little more about the project. As I mentioned, this is the Fairway Canyon 4C project. This includes five track maps, 31462-17, 1927, 28, and 29. The formations are to provide financing for the funding of infrastructure, consistent with what we discussed on September 2nd, to include roadways, sewer, and park improvements for the project. The ongoing service is, as I mentioned, for public safety and maintenance services through separate CFDs. And the outcome is for all infrastructure and services costs to be funded through the CFDs, not through general fund. This is just a project location of the project in question, as you see, north on San Timoteo Canyon Road. First, regarding the CFD 25-1 for Facilities. This is going to be, again, created pursuant to the Melrose Act in 1982 with a not to exceed estimated bonding capacity of $4 million. This is, again, just like the bonds that were issued, will provide for bond financing in the future to fund the city roads and sewer improvements. Part of the project, about $2.6 million, has been included. And regarding the special tax, this doesn't include improvement areas, but instead has three separate tax zones with their tax rates ranging between 576 and 682 per lot. Just want to mention that the average square footage of this project includes between 2,000 and 3,100 square feet, and the average estimated home price is looking at about $567,000 each. This does have an effective tax rate at the 2%, so it's within the city's policies. But that is taken into account, the, both the safety services, maintenance services factored in, as well as there's a Beaumont Unified School District CFD 22-1 that I show here with the effective taxes between 1,800 and 2,600 a unit. And the action for tonight is to adopt a resolution of intention for this CFD and authorize bond indebtedness. The second CFD is 2025-S, Public Services. So this is for Public Safety Services, and it is a separate CFD from 2025-1. Homeowners, when they buy these properties, are going to not see any difference on their property tax bill other than a different name associated to property tax bill, other than a different name associated to line items that say 23-1. So 23-1 has one line item for Facilities, a tax B for Safety, a tax C for Maintenance Services. So it'll still show up as three separate line items, but it'll just have a different CFD name next to it. This is a annexable CFD for future development. So for, based on our conversations previously and the goals that are approved, the idea here is to allow for a mechanism for other residential developments that come to the city that may not be asking for the city to form a facility CFD. For instance, they could form a CFD with a school district, and they would still be annexing into the city's Safety Services CFD as part of their conditions. So this provides the, the ability for residential development to, to pay their way for public safety services. So the tax rates for this CFD are 639 Single Family, 526 per multifamily, and it does include an escalator at 5% beginning 2627, which is consistent with the other safety services CFD city has had. And again, this is a citywide public safety funding framework. This is not meaning that every property in the city is going to be paying a safety tax. This is only for new development as a condition of their project being approved. And the action for you is to adopt a resolution of intention to form the CFD 25-S. And third, but not least, the 25-M Maintenance Services. And this is to provide maintenance services that the city would be providing for any typical project that comes forward. Again, this is an annexable CFD, so this also provides the same opportunity for the city to provide maintenance services for projects that aren't going to be in an improvement, Infrastructure CFD. But this wouldn't be just limited to residential. This could also include commercial or industrial projects who typically don't request for facility financing. But this would allow that, those projects as a condition to annex in to maintain street frontage, landscaping, streetlights, traffic signals, graffiti abatement, drainage facilities, all of those items specific to their project. There are two different tax rates that are included in this CFD. Now, the CFD, as we mentioned in our CFD 101, in order to form these two annexable CFDs, we needed cornerstone project. These, this is the cornerstone project to get these, these CFDs formed. Future development will simply be annexing in and creating a separate zone for their project, but they'll be coming in, for instance, 2025-M Annexation 1, Zone 1. So it'll be separate and apart from this project, and it'll have separate tax rates. So even though we're adopting tonight $438 per residential unit for city services, which has been derived specific to the facilities that are proposed to be maintained for these units, Project X that comes in next could have a different, will have a different tax rate, consistent with what those maintenance requirements are and the makeup of their project. So it's, it's tailored to the development. There's also a special tax B. This is a contingent tax, similar to what you've done in other CFDs that included maintenance taxes. There's a contingent tax where the Property Owners Association is providing those services. The city has the ability to come in and maintain those services if the Property Owners Association fails, fails to keep the maintenance at an adequate level. This is a funding mechanism with a council approval that would allow for a levy of special taxes to take over those maintenance requirements. This has an escalator of CPI or 2%, whichever is greater, again, consistent with the other CFDs that provide maintenance services. And the resolution of intention to form 25-M is included as Action J3. So the actions tonight are the adoption of resolutions of intention and setting the time and the place of the public hearing, which all of these will be presented back to the council in December on the 16th, to hold a public hearing and election for each of these districts. Each of those public hearings, there will be three separate public hearings for three separate items for three separate districts. And then finally, January of 2026 would be the second reading of the ordinance ordering the levying of special taxes. So the requested action is to adopt these, approve these resolutions, and authorize special tax levies for Facilities, Public Safety, and Maintenance for the project in question. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, I'll open up for council discussion. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the tax B. So the tax B doesn't kick in unless we take over those. So would then the residents would not have a bill for that until that point happens?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
David may end up answering my question, or asking my questions, but let's see if I can preemptive. Can you go back to the page with the M? The last sec, I think it was second to last page before the next. Okay. Just so I understand this, what we're approving tonight is the numbers based on this specific Facilities District, the first one, the I. And we're applying to it the maintenance services and the public safety, but we're making the maintenance service and public safety available for future annexations? Do the future annexations have to be contiguous to these? And are those, is it something that we can require or the developer has to request?
Well, absolutely. The, the, the standard practice would be having this as a condition of approval for their projects as they bring them forward.
Okay, and if, if someone else, like the school district comes in and they, they create a district and their number, and they don't follow our 2% limit, and they get up all the way up to 2%, are we prevented from using these as well?
No, no. So these, the way it typically occurs works with other agencies that are sort of forming their own Facilities District is understanding that the city has this in place. When their proponent comes forward and says, I want to form a schools district CFD, they're required to evaluate that effective tax rate. It is Melrose requirement that effective tax rate be at 2% at the time of formation. So there is a look at all the overlying, underlying assessments and special taxes, and the cities would be considered in priority of a Facilities District.
So remind me if the, I know the school district placed some on the olive wood, right? But is that something that we can control in our development agreements? I mean, they, I think they did it after the fact, correct?
Specific to whether the school district's the lead on a Facilities District?
So my, so you just laid out how it could happen, but what if does, does, does the school district have to do it at the same time we're creating a development agreement, where we're making it a condition of development?
No, the, they, the property owner can engage the school district to work with them on, on a proposed facility financing at any time. However, the project would be conditioned to the city's services districts as part of their, their map approval. So if they don't meet these conditions, there's no map to get approved for a school district to form a CFD on. So this would be considered in first before they would receive a request.
Okay. And then the last question. We're creating a citywide. What are the limits? Is it the city limits at this time? Is it our sphere of influence? What happens if we have a development that's coming in that's going to annex into the city?
So we're adopting an annexation area that would be a potential annexation area that's city boundaries and to provide notice for new development. If the city does expand that boundary, then we would bring in an amended potential annexation area for recreation to, to accommodate that. Typically, as the city would annex other property out from, from a county property into the city through the LAFCO process, there would be a consideration of the programs that the city already has in place that would have to be considered as part of their ability to serve that community.
Okay, thank you.
He still has his questions, sorry. Castle, Castlemember Finn?
Well, the first couple were very close, so I appreciate Lloyd's questions. In reference to the public services, is this our first example of putting one in place for that particular one? I know we have maintenance, you know, in other areas.
I believe there's an 18-1 that the city had formed previously that provided just public safety services, but it wasn't annexable and it was just standalone.
Okay.
There, there's several CFDs that we have that have a, a services special tax associated with it. Essentially, all of the CFDs you've had since 2016 have a facilities component, a services component, and a maintenance component. I think what Shane's talking here in the program that was sort of approved by the council in the September workshop is setting up these master annexable districts to sort of provide better notice and visibility to the development community about the city's intentions and all of this.
Okay. And if it was annexable in another area, as Lloyd's question was a good one, but it doesn't have to be contiguous, contiguous, if I'm saying it correctly. But my question would be, would it be the, the dollar amount that we have at the 639, starting off with the services one, would that be something similar than another development would do? And if it was a year from now, would it be 639 plus 5%?
Good question. Actually, as new development comes in, they will be annexing in at the, then set tax rate for 2025-S. So it would be consistent with all other properties that are already within the CFD.
Okay, so they kick in. So then everybody on that one is all paying the same rate?
Correct.
Okay. And then to confirm the area that this is for, this is the hillside where they're currently grading and so forth, so there's no homes for sale over there yet. So all the homeowners will all have all this information at time of sale.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yeah, and just to confirm, do we currently have DAs that are tied to these?
Yeah, yes. If you remember back when the last Fairway Canyons came, which is part of the same development, it was, we did an analysis for the city at that point in time, looked at the development agreement. There was questions about whether the development agreement was expunged in, the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy, and I think we came to the conclusion that it was not, it was still binding. And so this is part of that master plan community and part of some of that development agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a recommended, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended actions for J1, J2, and J3.
I'll second.
A roll call, please?
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Voit?
Yes.
Laura, Mayor Laura?
Yes.
May I ask a question? Why in the past did we have to read all certain pieces one at a time, and then we had to vote on it? Why has that changed? Do you, do you know what I'm talking about? I mean, it used to be, I remember last time I was mayor, remember we used to have to, you had to read this specific part?
We will with the public hearing, but not the resolution of intention, I'll think. And so, but, so when we come back, it's, it's just to warn you all, like, don't hate me, but the, on December 16th, we come back, there's going to be three separate public hearings with three separate scripts, a separate script for each, and there's going to be a separate election for each one. And so it'll be a little cumbersome and time consuming on the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that'll all happen.
When's that meeting going to be?
December 16th.
Good question. Okay, that brings us to the adjustment in our agenda for item J8.
Robert, what airport are you flying out of? What airport are you flying out of?
Okay. You gonna be okay? Okay.
Okay, so Mayor, you have an item before you were, Robert and I and Doug are going to go through three major projects that we've been following and tracking. I would like to preface this as saying some of this information we've received as late as this afternoon. So this is a rapidly evolving subject matter. So the handouts that I just gave you, one of them we received this afternoon, it was an email sent from Robert to me that he received. And then the second is an updated attachment A that was in your packet. So I want to give a brief overview of what we're going to be talking about. Again, it's updates on the council's three major capital projects, the Stewart Park Revitalization, Pennsylvania Avenue Grade Separation, and Paturo Interchase Phase 2. Each of these projects represents a significant investment in the quality of life, safety, and mobility for the residents of Beaumont. We intend, staff intends to return on November 18th with a public hearing for a CIP amendment and final funding recommendations. There's no fiscal impact today. This is a discussion and potential direction only. So I'm going to start with Stewart Park Revitalization. Again, this is one of those projects that's rapidly evolving. We had a nine o'clock meeting this morning with the chief of Ol' Gals, which is the Office of Grants and Land something with the state. Yeah. So I, I will go through just a summary of what's in the staff report quickly, and then give you an update on that conversation from this morning. So this is a flagship community project in downtown Catalyst. It focuses on inclusivity, accessibility, and park improvements. As you recall, Phase 1, we broke ground in July of 2024. Phase 1 is currently paused as of June 2025 to protect the eligibility for a $3.1 million federal grant for Phase 2. Phase 2's estimated budget at this time is $6.2 million, and our current funding, based on conversations with the state, is at $5.6 million. That includes $3.1 million from the general fund and $2.5 million in grants. Ultimately, once the construction bids are received post-Phase 1 completion, a more solid dollar amount will be known. And at that time, we will bring back a CIP amendment with recommendations to fund any deficit with other, using other park project funds. So for Stewart Park, we're going to start looking at CIP projects of other park projects to offset the deficit, if any, once we are through the Phase 2 bid. So the next steps were awaiting federal documentation to release grant funds before resuming construction of Phase 1. We were notified in a meeting this morning with the state to not expect Phase 1 to resume until after January 2026. That is in part because of the federal shutdown. That's definitely adding to the delay. We were also notified that ongoing interactions and communications with congressional members could complicate and delay the process further. The next steps, the State Office of Grants and Local Services will be sending documents to the State Historic Preservation Office, otherwise known as SHIPO, and then we will await a 30-day review. Also in the meeting this morning, Ol' Gals agreed to notify city staff if there were any pauses or restarts in the SHIPO process. And so the way I understand this is SHIPO receives the information from Ol' Gals. They have 30 days to review that information. If they have to come back to Ol' Gals and ask for any further documentation, that 30-day clock starts over. So before I move on to the Pennsylvania Grade Separation, are there any questions about Stewart Park?
Sorry. Mayor Protim Voit?
Yeah, can you go back over the SHIPO process again? This is obviously new and something we did not anticipate from the beginning. Was this outlined within the application?
It was. It's part of the, the federal process.
And did we not know or complete it? Or did we not complete it? And did we not know or complete it, or did we not complete it satisfactorily?
We, they're just reviewing it. So Ol' Gals hasn't even sent it to them yet, they agreed to send it, all the documentation, to them this week. Because this is a little bit complicated, I wanted to just read for you real quick. So the SHIPO process is part of the, what we call the Section 106 process, which is a procedure required by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. It, the Section 106 process determines if the process applies, identifies historic properties, assesses the project's effects, and then consultation. This also has to do with the tribal. You've heard us talk about, we need to get local tribal folks involved to look at the site, and so that's what we've been working on up to this point. We've packaged everything up, Ol' Gals has it, now they communicate with the State Office of Historic Preservation. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just hadn't heard the term SHIPO yet, so I didn't know if it was something that was new, so I, I appreciate the clarification.
And the reason you haven't heard it is because we were far from that step in the process, but we're there now. Should I move on?
Yeah, please.
Okay, okay, so moving on to the Pennsylvania Avenue grade separation. As a reminder, the purpose is to eliminate the rail crossing under Union Pacific tracks south of the I-ten to improve safety, mobility, and air quality. The total project cost is seventy-eight to eighty-six million. Funding right now, we have been selected for a $50.4 million award through the California Transportation Commission's TSEP grant. There's another eight million in local regional match secured, and there's roughly about fifteen to twenty-two million still unfunded. If you refer to that spreadsheet that Robert put together, that kind of walks you through the different line items. So the progress thus far, we expect environmental clearance December of 2025, and we expect RCTC to become the lead agency. You will be seeing a cooperative agreement between the city and RCTC. I expect that to be on the November eighteenth meeting, is that correct, Robert? With the signing of that agreement, and likely the heavy part of this conversation, RCTC notified us on Thursday the final number that we need to put together in order to sign that cooperative agreement, and it is, it's in that spreadsheet, and it's nine point four million, correct, Robert?
It's fourteen million, we have some available cash, the balance is nine point nine million.
Nine point nine million. This project is now a state-recognized freight corridor priority. Do you have any other updates on any grants that we've applied for and have been notified yet?
No, we have two outstanding grants, we can talk about those at a later time, but no notifications as of yet.
Okay. So we will continue to actively pursue grants for the Penn grade SEP. The urgency on this is the fifty point four million. When we were selected for that, if you recall, the mayor and myself and a team went to Sacramento the last week in January, we were notified that we had been selected, and it was a snowball of events at that time to get to the point where we're at tonight, to make sure that, number one, RCTC would take the project and that we had, you know, secured enough funding. There's environmental, we have bi-weekly meetings with RCTC, Caltrans, and the city staff to make sure that we're meeting all the milestones of that grant. We will not know until spring, June of twenty-six, if we're awarded. Is that correct, is that the CTC schedule?
Yeah, that is correct, that's when we would have to obligate the funds.
Right, so there are several things, like the Stewart Park grant, there are several things that we have to do ahead of time, and RCTC and Caltrans have been very supportive in making sure that we all come together and meet those milestones. Any questions on that one?
Just to confirm, the, I'm sorry, the gap is nine point nine million for RCTC for their?
That is correct, that is for design and right-of-way only.
Sorry, just to clarify, it's nine million, nine point four, nine, the one in red, not the nine point nine.
Yeah, I apologize, I believe I did reference the nine point nine earlier, it is in fact the nine point four six eight.
Okay, so I was trying to confirm.
And, and then as you go into construction, then there's a possible down there of eight or twenty-two, depending on the pending, a separate shortfall.
That is correct, just for reference, the spreadsheet that you have in front of you, does it have the construction phase breakdown?
Yeah.
It does, great, thank you.
Yeah, so that's what I was looking at, so we got nine, four, six, eight here, and then possibly down here, either eight or twenty-two, depending on the pending.
That is correct.
There will be an item on the, and Councilmember White, correct me if I'm wrong, on the state, November twelfth, is the next RCTC meeting?
Yes.
There'll be an item on that that has already gone to the Revenue Committee. Robert attended that meeting, and there is a proposal to reprogram State Transportation Infrastructure Program, it's called STIP, to reprogram some money from the Highland Springs project to the Penn grade SEP, and both cities have supported that, and the mayor actually signed a letter tonight to include in RCTC's packet that will go out to the commissioners.
That's represented by the six point seven million under the construction phase.
The thought process was the Highland Springs design, or the Penn grade separation is closer to the construction phase than the Highland Springs design, and therefore, the six point seven could be used a lot quicker than the Highland Springs. I think that is predicted at 2033.
Yes, that's correct.
Twenty thirty-three for Highland Springs construction. Okay, last but not least?
I have a question on that.
Sorry, Castleboyd?
More of a confirmation, my understanding is, so right now you're showing eighty-six, eight point six, if we get the pending, twenty-two if we don't.
That's correct.
My last discussion with Aaron, my understanding is that not all of that money has to be secured before we start. Unlike Highland Springs, we have, you know, could be spread over a number of fiscal years, is that, is that your understanding as well?
Are we talking about the cooperative agreement money? Yeah, okay, so I understand that RCTC does program per fiscal year. In my experience, philosophically, if the money isn't in the bank, I'm reluctant to have, to sign on the dotted line for any type of agreement. It, it is fiscally responsible to make sure that the money is programmed in the CIP prior to committing and entering into an agreement with RCTC. However, council has the absolute authority to incrementally program that money every fiscal year.
My discussion is budgeting versus programming, we talking about the same thing?
It's the same thing, programming and budgeting are the same thing.
Okay, because my understanding is that we could budget for this in one fiscal year and then another portion of it in the next fiscal year. In other words, we're not at a point where we have to come up with the twenty-two million in the next budget?
No, right now, what's before us right now is the, the nine point four, and that's tied to the cooperative agreement.
Correct, I understood, I'm looking more at the bigger number, the twenty-two million. We don't need to
No.
find a way to budget for that this fiscal year.
Correct, but it will need to be a discussion and, and budgeted before construction, which means before the RFPs go out.
And the schedule on that is?
June of 2027 will be when we
Okay.
fully obligate those funds, so probably September of 2027, similar to Paturo.
Okay, and that was my understanding, I just didn't want everyone to feel like we have to, we have to get this all done now and
No.
and start figuring out which projects we're going to get rid of in order to get this all done right now.
No, correct, the construction funding does not have to be done right now.
Got it, I just, yeah, I want to make sure the rest of the council knew that.
Yeah.
Thanks. Castlemember Martinez?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so the last project is the Paturo interchange, phase two. The second handout that I gave you was an email that we received today, the bids are in. They are favorable. We initially thought last week when we were talking about this item that we were going to have another what-if, similar to Stewart Park, we're not sure if we have enough money, but as of today, pending negotiations between RCTC and the contractor, because this is RCTC's award, this is not Beaumont's, pending negotiations between RCTC and the contractor, we do believe that we have enough money budgeted to, for RCTC to award that project. However, like I said, things change rapidly, so if anything changes on that, Robert can bring an item back to council to update you. We have fifty-eight million programmed, and I believe the low bidder is forty-eight. That was a huge sigh of relief.
Yeah, I'll say.
So, just in summary, Paturo completes the full interchange connecting the bridge. The TSEP grant, as a reminder, is thirty-three and a half million, that's already awarded. The total project cost is eighty point one. RCTC's the lead for construction, environmental clearance is complete, and I already shared with you, the, as of this afternoon, the bids have been received. Construction's anticipated spring of 2026, and contingency planning may be required once a thorough review by RCTC has been completed, which could take a couple months. So in conclusion, the overall funding and next steps, like I said, we will be presenting funding source options on November eighteenth for the Penn grade separation, reprogramming under utilized or lower priority CIP funds to cover current project deficits while preserving reserves, and in, in that spreadsheet, there are suggested CIP projects. Obviously, it's at the discretion of council to determine which projects. I do want to point out, the projects listed on that sheet would be reduced to zero, except we're recommending to leave a million dollars in the Highland Springs smart technology traffic signals to get Highland Springs done. But other than that, the rest of the projects would be brought down to zero. In my staff report, I did recommend that we not touch the savings account, there's roughly six million in there. We expect a draft audit either today or tomorrow. We still need to do some work on the audit, that will be coming forward to council before the end of the calendar year, and that may change your savings account balance, and at that time, it might be prudent to have a discussion, if council so chooses, to use some of the savings account. But right now, I don't recommend that, obviously, it's council's discretion.
Okay. Nicole, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no written requests, Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
We have one caller.
Okay, for item J eight?
That is correct.
Okay, go ahead and send it through. Caller, can you hear us?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, hey, this is Ron Roy in Fairway Canyon, and I just wanted to understand all the projects that the city's trying to accomplish. I have no qualms with that and what you've been discussing, however, I do think there's a big-time error, a big-time problem in the capital improvement going ahead, and that's the recommending that Oak Valley Parkway and Paturo Boulevard are going to be recommended truck priority network. They're going to allow truck, big rig trucks, hundreds of trucks going across the sixty freeway north on Paturo Boulevard by the hundreds of homes at Olive Wood, then going right into Oak Valley Parkway after it crosses over the railroad tracks, to thousands of homes at Shadow Creek, Tournament Hills, where I live. There's a big-time problem with that, it's, if you look at the priority network, it's the only part of the city where this kind of grievous errors occur. You need to come up with a different route, and I don't know if you're going to add another lane on Oak Valley Parkway, but you should not allow trucks to come, to, to come along that route and enter I-ten on Oak Valley Parkway. I mean, you got the safe streets, you got the kids riding bikes and going back and forth from school, it's a, it's a nightmare. So all I'm asking is that in your, if you can come up with a plan, use your brains, okay? Talk to the engineer, the public works engineer, get a consultant, and come up with a route, a new route that won't use Paturo Boulevard and Oak Valley, and remove that recommended priority network designation. Maybe it's along Western Knolls, or maybe it's Fourth Street, or maybe, you know, however you do it, but you need to come it up, and I'd like to see that. I know it's a waste for those entertainments, especially Oak Valley and the sixty ten, I know the years are wasted, but I want to see a plan, it's just a terrible idea, there's not supposed to be that many trucks. Hundreds of trucks, it's going to affect families, and all the houses, noise, light, you name it, the congestion, traffic accidents, so thank you, but please, find a way, show me a plan, and you gotta get rid of that terrible idea, and I look forward to that in the next few months with preliminary plans, thank you.
Any additional public comment, no caller, we good?
Benny, do we have any other callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, so with that, turn it over to council for discussion, direction on funding sources, to offset three major projects as discussed. Councilmember Martinez?
Elizabeth, go back to the Stewart again one more time. So I've got the potential shortfalls for, for Penn, but tell me once again, looking at the pie, the chart and so forth, give me the rundown one more time, I think I got lost in there.
So, phase one is fully funded.
Okay.
Contract was awarded, we were selected for a grant, state came in and said, we consider this one project, pause June 2025. The grant that we applied for was a matching grant, dollar for dollar. We had programmed three point one million in the, in the project. We had budgeted three point one million for the project for phase two. We applied for a three point one to match. That has since, we've been notified by the state through this whole process that they are likely only going to give us two point five million of the three point one. Keep in mind that we also brought forth an item to council for roughly $300,000 to pay the current contractor, Act One, to pause. If we don't continue construction until after January 2026, which we found out today, the contractor's likely going to want another change order, we don't know what that dollar amount is. Doug has reached out to Act One to find out, you know, approximately January, February, if there's a cost at all.
So for phase one, once we get a clearance, that's fully funded, that keeps going?
Correct.
And then when phase two comes in, that's the part we're talking about with, with everything here, okay.
The only crossover, which is very confusing to the public, is phase one has been paused, it is fully funded. Phase two is the grant, phase two is the reason why we paused phase one, per the state.
Okay, and then going further, that will take the six plus whatever we have to do and so forth.
Right, and we won't know, again, we won't know what the actual cost of phase two is until we put it out to bid. The construction industry dictates the cost of construction, and we can estimate as best we can and have the experts in our team sit down and do a cost estimate. But until those construction bids come in, we really don't know what the deficit is.
So we have the three-one budgeted now, the three-one additional was the match.
Which has now been reduced to two point five.
Which is now two five, and if that comes through, then we have three-one. Which is now 2.5, and if that comes through, then we have 3.1 plus 2.5, plus whatever we talked about with Act 1 going forward, and then plus whatever this actual bid is going to be at the time it goes out.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, just a quick comment. It's a shame we don't have any representation at the state level that can help us here. I mean, where is our state senator and our state assembly member?
The, I do believe the senator reached out to Ol' Gaus, and I, the reason I know that is because Ol' Gaus mentioned elected official.
Understood, I'm just saying, we don't, let me rephrase that. We don't have any state representation that have any pull in Sacramento. Ol' Gaus, I thought that was federal.
Ol' Gaus is state.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're the keeper of the federal money.
Okay.
So do we have any direction or changes we wish to make to the list that was provided, or do we just want to move forward with that list and see how it goes?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I support the recommended changes by staff, but the recommendation from staff.
I think it was just.
By direction, I think we've done that, right?
Can we just ask questions, I don't know if we've provided direction?
There will be a CIP amendment reflecting this discussion, and so far, it'll be this list that comes back November 18th.
Well, one question I, I do have, a discussion with Highland Springs, we want to understand the, the need for the smart tech traffic signal, say aside 1 million to get Highland Springs done, because we want to move that, that traffic. Have we reached out to them yet for any type of an MOU or something where we can get some type of money recovery to help fund some of these projects that we may be short on?
I have reached out to the Banning counterparts. I do have a lunch meeting scheduled to discuss that, but so far, no, no discussions of shared funding.
Okay.
Just to be clear, though, we did get approval from Banning to allow us to move the 6.7 million.
You know what?
Which I think was a big.
Yeah.
A big contribution.
Thank you for reminding me, I appreciate that.
I do have one more question for Elizabeth. The 300, may I?
Yes.
The 300 that we approved for Act 1, that would put our 3.1 budget plus the 300, but that one's already been.
No, the, the 300 is going to come out of the Phase 1, which is a completely separate project.
Okay.
There's some contingency money that council approved.
Okay, that's, that's right.
Right, so that, that 300 is not going to come out of Phase 2.
Okay, thank you.
You good now? Okay, do you have the direction needed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate you looking at that and trying to get out ahead of it, because I know this was not planned, but is good news and so. Robert, you're welcome to stick around if you'd like, but I understand if you don't, if you need to go.
Yeah, I really do appreciate council's consideration of that, thank you. I will stay till 9:00 if that's all right.
We'll be done.
Are you on chance?
You sure?
I was on chance at home. You do not?
Yeah.
You can reject.
Yeah.
That's faster to be.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
This stream must say you go.
We'll miss you.
What time is it, bud?
Midnight.
1:00.
It's an hour and 37 minutes.
Okay, yeah. Bye, Robert.
Get out.
Thank you. Okay, are we good to continue?
Are we going to go another hour?
All right, well, I don't know. It's, all right. Brings us to item J4, Facility Use Agreement with Von Keesh Kennels, to utilize city-owned facilities for canine training. I don't know if we'll be able to get through this one, it looks pretty rough. Thank you, I'll be here all night.
Oh, rough.
Rough, good.
Rough, rough.
You know what?
You need a disclaimer.
Might need more.
Yeah, exactly, I'm fading, Halloween candy. Chief?
Mayor, council, since the inception of our canine program in 2017, we've purchased all our dogs through Von Lake Kennels. It's also the company that we use to do our biweekly training. I learned that we allow the company to use our vacant buildings in the back for free to do dog training. Figured we need to get a formal of facility use agreement, and I use this opportunity also to negotiate a deal where in exchange for using these abandoned building, or vacant buildings, that we get free training. So before you today is the new facility use agreement that our city attorney put together. In it, it provides access to the vacant buildings of Building F, the nutrition center, Building D, the transit building, and 500 Grace Avenue. In exchange for the use of those facilities, we will get a training day for one canine each training day waived, a cost of $400 per training class. Right now, the trainings are twice a month, but we do anticipate with a new canine being, coming up in the near future, after K9 Murph is retired, that there'll be a few months of weekly training. So the use of these facilities will save us a lot of money when it comes to the training And I, you'll see on the staff report that I referenced the $150 an hour rental fee for the gym. The reason why I'm referencing the gym is the vacant buildings in the back do not have rental rates right now. They're not being used for public use, so I really don't have a price structure to go off of, so I use the gym as just a, a reference point. If we were to put a dollar value to it, I would assume it'd be less than the gym rate since they're smaller buildings, it's not really designed for, you know, large uses, but I just wanted to give a, a reference point for council. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, chief. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, then I'll open it up for council discussion or motion. Mayor Protemboy?
Yeah, seeing no questions, I will move to, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
One second.
I will move to approve the recommended action.
One second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
What exactly is the recommended action?
To approve the facilities agreement.
Yes.
Mayor To, Mayor Protemboy?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Yes.
Good one. That brings us to item J5, Professional Service Agreement with Care Solus for mental health coordination services utilizing national opioid settlement funds. Mr. Guss?
Yes, mayor, members of the city council. This is a consideration of a professional service agreement with Care Solus. It's to provide care coordination services from mental health providers and community social services for all residents of Beaumont, utilizing funds that the city has received from the National Opioid Settlement Agreements. Now, since 2022, the city has had over 122,000, it's actually 122,396 dollars that have been paid out. The city has only been able to use 20,000 because they've been looking for a qualified task, something that would qualify under these funds. We're estimating to get a total of 372,500 all the way up to 2038. So staff was looking to give these monies back. Instead, we started looking at ways to be able to use this money, and we found this company that other cities like Temecula, Murrieta, Stockton have been using, that is a qualifying company to do these type of services. So like I said, the city of Beaumont has received funds from the National Opioid Settlement Agreements, and anticipates those funds for the next five to 12 years. And again, several cities throughout California have joined in multiple national lawsuits against manufacturers, distributors, responsible for aiding the opioid epidemic. So the funding share for each state has been determined by an agreement among those states that accounts for the impact of the opioid crisis on the state based on the number of overdose deaths, number of residents with SUD, which is substance use disorder, and also the number of opioids prescribed, as well as the state's population. California jurisdictions receiving the OSA allocations, they have to utilize these opioid funds for substance use prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery services in their communities. And what Care Solus is providing qualifies for those services. So what staff is proposing is a contract for three years, and it'll utilize a portion of funding received under the Opioid Settlement Fund. A total of 122,000 again has been paid, and the city to date has only used 20,000. We're proposing that Care Solus have a three-year agreement with a total of, let's see, it'll be 135,000 for the term of three years. And none of this will be paid through the general fund, it's all through the opioid settlement funds. In your report, you'll see the funds that have been paid and the funds that are estimated per year. So we've been paid again from 2022 to 2025. We're anticipating the rest of the monies to come from 2026 to 2038. So now that we have found a qualifier, we're asking you to approve this agreement with Care Solus. And again, per the State Department of Healthcare and Services, the opioid settlement funds, they can last up to 18 years. They have to be encumbered within five years of receipt, so we still have time to use those that we've received from 2022, but we have to act quickly. So again, that's why we're bringing this to you today. I'm going to have Care Solus, Ms. Anita Ward is here representing them, she's going to give a brief presentation of what they do and what they've done for other cities after my presentation here. And again, what Care Solus proposes is to assist the city with mental health and substance use care. In a sense, they are like the family member that's aiding the victim, or the person that needs the aid, but they get all caught up in the minutia of having to do phone calls themselves, go from one provider to another, and sometimes they get so frustrated that they just stop trying and they don't get the services. So Care Solus comes in here as that family member that's going to hold their hand and take them through it. So they're going to connect residents to providers, personalize the assistance, keep it very confidential also, address the barriers to care that we see out there, and support the whole community. So it's not just the residents of Beaumont, but also the business owners, anyone within the city of Beaumont that comes to Beaumont. We did a sole source proposal here, and again, after considerable research, staff was able to justify a sole source contract without having to do a request for proposals process. And we saw that several other jurisdictions had done this, because there's no comparable services out there that have the 24/7 access, provide matching warm handoffs, and direct first responders integration as the basis for bypassing competitive bidding. So staff's consensus is that the RFP process would not produce a full service alternative, and that's why we were able to justify it. The fiscal impact, annual pricing for the city of Beaumont is based on a fee of a dollar per resident per year, so it's all per capita. There is sufficient funding, like I said, in the opioid settlement agreements. The fact that we've received them from 22, 2022 on, we have that amount in place to be able to pay for these services. And again, an amount not to exceed 135,000 for a three-year term. Recommendation that we have is to approve the professional services agreement with a 135 not to exceed amount for a three-year term, and also approve a business associate agreement, which is required for the software that is being used. And Anita Ward will go into that. And also authorize the city manager to take appropriate actions to carry out the purpose and intent of this agreement. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Anita Ward. She has a brief presentation for you. Looks like a lot of slides, but she promised to keep it brief.
Good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, everybody who's left in the room, chief. As, as city manager said, my name's Anita Ward, and I'm with Care Solus. We're a social purpose organization, and thank you, city manager, for all of that, because there's very little left in the slides for me to cover. So I am going to start with a story that I hadn't intended on starting with, but I think it will provide you some context. I was a kid who grew up in a family that was chronically unhoused. For the first 15 years of my life, we didn't have a home, couldn't point to an address. We couch-surfed, we floor-surfed, it was family and friends, and when you wear out your welcome, you go to another city. And by the time I was 15, we had done that at least 22 times. My dad was a veteran, so God bless you guys for next week, I wish I could be here for the parade. But my dad was a veteran who struggled with PTSD and substance abuse, and he never found his footing. So he struggled often with stability, he didn't know what services to turn to. My mom, as you see from my waving hands, was first generation Italian, so very, she failed to assimilate in, in the ways that, you know, Italians, we were, were very close. But also, she struggled with depression and anxiety. I'm not a clinician, but I assume it's with, one of the 22 moves we made, we lived in shelters, we lived in churches, we lived in cars, and I have a brother and two sisters, and as a family unit, we stayed together. But chief, my dad gave, I'm sure every first responder a difficult time because they would come, and what did they do with him? Right? Here, we would maybe do a 51-50, so he'd be in an emergency room, a first responder would have to deal with him, my mom would be in an emergency room, they never knew where to find care. In all of those 22 cities, the place we went when we needed a few hundred dollars, or a place to stay was a Catholic church. That's all my, my family knew. And at 15, thank God, we, he threw us in a U-Haul, which became our home for a few months, and we drove from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania to Las Vegas. So we lived at a rest stop in Las Vegas because there were bathrooms. And, and we are one of the lucky ones. I'm here because I'm fortunate, because our paths did change, because we, we found dignity and we found help. But I'm also sharing this story because as I look today, I know there's a lot of Anitas living in cars. I know that when, when you need mental health care, and you're struggling, and you make those phone calls, you can make 80 phone calls. But you're navigating insurance, you're navigating eligibility, you're navigating specialization, you're navigating accessibility. And at Care Solus, what we think and we believe to our core is that this should be as easy as ordering an Uber. I mean, we can make reservations on OpenTable, we know how to do this, and so that's what we built. We built a navigation system that has incredible technology. It has almost 700,000 mental health providers that we know everything about in every state. We've geolocated them, we know their specialization, we know their availability, we know the languages they speak, we know their ethnicity. Everything that contributes to efficacy of care, we've indexed in our provider network. It is the largest, as city manager shared, in the country. Nobody else has it, we have, and it's updated real time. And then we thought, well, we really need people to get care, and when you're struggling, you want to talk to a human being. So we have care companions that navigate all of this, this chaos and complexity. So any resident, any, anybody, as you see in this, I'm assuming you can see those slides, as you see, anybody in Beaumont can call us 24/7, 365, and talk to a care companion and say, I am struggling, this is my need. We have 500 care companions across the country. Here in Riverside County, we have 4,700 and change of mental health providers that we're already navigating on behalf of primarily 23 school districts, and Temecula and Murrieta have been with us for years, and we're placing people into care. So we do all that heavy lift. We're matching people to care in a day here in Riverside County, we're getting people to appointments in six days. And we navigate not just their insurance, but the lack thereof. So if you don't have insurance, and in fact, about half of the people that we help here in the county, either on public insurance or have no insurance, we navigate them to providers who accept public insurance, or we navigate them to a provider who will actually set up sliding scale with them and work through that. So we've, we've wrapped our arms around the complexities of this model, and we've been proving it now for over 10 years. We, here. Here, what we would do, as we do in any city, is whether you are an employer, whether you're that employee from SEIU that came up earlier today, whether you're a community organization, a nonprofit, first responders, everybody has the ability to send us a warm handoff, whether that's scanning a QR code and getting them to us or making a phone call. Our care companions speak more than 200 languages, we have live translators, so we've done everything we can to remove obstacles to care. You may or may not know, Marietta is a little bit further, as I saw driving up from San Diego, but now Lori Stone is council member, but at the time when we worked with, when we first started with Marietta, Lori was Mayor Stone at the time, and our case study with Marietta was embraced by the U.S. Conference of Mayors as a best practice for cities. So we're very proud of that. We don't have a triple crown, but man, I'm hoping, like, we ought to get there, I'm feeling competitive. But if you want to think through, as City Manager said, something that substantiates us is our scale, our current scale. We have 25 million people across the country using our platform and using our services. Here in Riverside County, we have the cities, the school districts, and what that adds up to is about 1,008,000 in terms of the number of people and families and individuals we're supporting. As I said, we have almost 700 providers around all 50 states, but here in California, we have 110,000 in the county, just shy of 5,000, but we add every day. And as you see, the 50% of them either don't have insurance or public insurance. I promised City Manager I will not talk long, but from the cities and school districts in Riverside County, we have just this year already fielded almost 50,000 service requests. So there are people, there is a demand, people are struggling, and they don't know where to go to get to care. And I think the best way perhaps to illustrate it is that, yes, there are crisis centers, and there are clinicians, but there are a lot of clinicians who work from their homes as well. And we don't see that availability, if they're not optimized on Google or some search, but they're in our network. And we know their availability, and we know their specialization, and we know that we can get people to them and get appointments with them. So we basically have optimized, taking the emotion out of it, optimized the supply chain for mental and behavioral health care. In the process of us rolling this out, cities and school districts came to us and said, "Look, a lot of the people with mental health issues have underlying housing issues or food issues like my own family. Could you also navigate fragmented social services?" And we said yes. So also, if we're fortunate enough to work with you, we would navigate not just the behavioral and mental health providers here in Beaumont, but also the social services. If I have a food need and our care companions are talking to them, they're going to know eligibility requirements. We do a complete study of all of the social services that you have here, learning more about eligibility. We find a lot in California's housing, as you might suspect, and we're in about, I think we have eight or nine million people just here in Southern California, we're in about 15% of all the school districts in the country. And so we've navigated a lot of this here in California already, so our providers are really seasoned and robust here. And so as we place people into care, we assess, do they also have an underlying need? Is there a domestic situation? Do they need temporary housing? Do they need more medical? And we will navigate that on behalf of them as well. So it's very simple, anybody in Beaumont can call us, they can scan a QR code, like you saw Lori holding up in her picture, they're all over Marietta. And then we have a self-service model. And the self-service model is what people use a lot of. So they go to the QR code, they log in, or they don't log in, I'm sorry, they go to the QR code, there's no login, we don't have any PII, and we don't need any HIPAA data, but they go in and they can search our provider network on their own. And from that system, they can also call a care companion and get help. Tons, we have tons and tons and tons of data. You will, in fact, at some point, when I'll keep coming to your city council, you'll say, "Okay, enough." But what I want to get to are patterns and trends, and what are we seeing, and give you insights so the data's actionable. So you may find that young women, 11 to 14, are experiencing more and more self-harm over time, which happens to be a trend that we're seeing here in Riverside County. Lori will tell you, when we first went to Marietta, the suicide rates astounded her. People were calling us, 28% of the calls we got initially were for suicidal ideation. So we work closely with 988, with the Suicide, National Suicide Hotline, with warm handoffs, with 911, with first responders, to make sure that all of that safety net is in place as well. So you'll get lots of data, we'll look at it in any ways you want to be able to look at it. And we do all the engagement, we do all the fun stuff, we come to your events, we would be here Tuesday, and so my point is that we become a partner with you, we become part of your social structure, and we're solving for all of those issues that I certainly experienced as a child. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay, then I'll open it up for council discussion questions. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just question, Gus, are you still in line?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, two questions for you. One, once the funds have been transferred from, I guess, does it go from county to city to CARE Solus, or does it go from county straight to CARE and we just authorize it? And then basically, my question is, I don't need really the details, I'm looking for the accountability. So once the funds are assigned over at whatever point, is there any liability for the city for the accountability of the funds?
The program is administered by CARE Solus, so they will be preparing the quarterly reports, they will have to give them to the city for the city to submit.
Right.
So ultimately, it is the city running the funds, and we're distributing it to CARE Solus.
Okay, and then who are we justifying the money to? In other words, if we're getting the report and submitting that, we're assuming the report's accurate, of course, is there anything that the city can be, you know, have a problem with, that the county wants further clarification or anything like that?
The county at this point is looking for us to either give them back the money or to identify how we're going to be using them. And now that we've identified CARE Solus, they're saying, yes, they are a qualified provider, other cities have been using them, so they're on board with us moving forward and accepting that money. We were at a point that we were going to return this $120,000, we only used 20,000 of the 122 that we've received. And one thing that's really positive for us is we don't have to have our staff administering that. This is something that we will be getting help with our grants person, Brittany, but she will be getting all the reports from Anita and her staff. So we won't have to prepare anything, we'll just act as the middleman to make sure that gets submitted timely.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton Voight?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your work and what you guys do here.
Thank you.
As an emergency room nurse, this is very close to my heart at times, I don't do that anymore, but I definitely...
Thank you for yours.
Thank you, I see the need for sure with regards to this. It is nice to be able to hand somebody that is a resident or within Beaumont some type of resource when we, you know, exchange with them, so I appreciate the work that's being done.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Do we have a...
Well, thank you for everything, thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you.
I will, Mayor, no further questions. I will move to approve the professional service agreement with CARE Solus in the amount not to exceed $135,000 for a three-year term to provide social and mental health care coordination services utilizing funds received through the National Opioid Settlements Agreement and the further recommended action.
I'll second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item J6, consideration and exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Landmark Coffee Roasters and Slice Society Pizza and Wine Bar for the redevelopment of 105 West Sixth Street. Mr. Kurt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and Council. Before you, as the mayor outlined, is a exclusive right to negotiate with this tenant. You'll recall, and the community will recall, back this spring, we entered into a similar type document with a tap house, which ultimately, they pulled out of that negotiation, and so that left us seeking a replacement tenant for a variety of reasons, partly because the building is so small, it really doesn't lend itself to a full-service restaurant, it's only a little over 1,200 square feet, and if you built out a kitchen, you really wouldn't have room to do much dining. So the idea of a coffee house, along with pizza in the evening, which takes up very little room, seems to make a lot of sense. As you know, it's a very handsome, historic building in a very prominent location. Landmark Coffee is a terrific operation down in Redlands. If you haven't been there, I would encourage you to visit them. We think they'll be an ideal tenant and an ideal operation here. So the document before you, if you approve it tonight, would set in place a timeframe until the end of June of next year for us to finalize a lease arrangement with the tenant. It does have an extension at the city manager's sole discretion for up to another 90 days after that. Hopefully, we won't need that extra time, but you never know, because as you know, there are renovation costs and scope of work that we're in the process of putting together and packaging now over the next few months. So we'll be dual-tracking that and working with the prospective tenant as they refine a site plan, or not a site plan, but a tenant improvement plan and that. So happy to answer any questions, but would encourage us to approve this and move on.
Thank you for that report. Nicole, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no written requests. Benny, do we have any callers on the line?
No callers.
I'll open it up for council discussion. Or a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute the exclusive right and negotiate agreement between the city of Beaumont and Landmark Coffee Roasters and Slice Society Pizza and Wine Bar for 105 West Sixth Street and provide any additional direction as needed. I think we do.
I'll second.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Voight?
Yes.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we should take a break, Mel? I heard him turn on the air. You want to take a break before we do this last one? Yeah, we're going to do a five-minute break, five-minute recess. Yeah, right?
So I just noticed...
Ah, we're back. We're really so good without this coming through.
Thank you.
Excellent.[1385.13]
Thank you.
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 Yeah, just some clarification first. So for the slide here where it says the one option. Yeah, with your overlay question and the proposal, and then you said there was a second option. I thought I heard. Where is that?
Status quo.
Status quo, leaving out the way it was.
Correct.
And then, um, how would the four to one ratio work? So obviously it's, you know, you take four down to allow one, but how does that work when it comes to the ownership? So if I'm an owner and I have one billboard and this owner here has six billboards, you know, and if they want to do all six and, you know, does it mean they get one at a time and, and all the proposals go in? Or how does that work when it comes to regulating the business and the ownership and, and first come, first serve? Or what has, what are we looking at?
Community development, and I would say it'd be first come, first served. If there's a one-off or someone that owns one that wants to partner with someone, that's not out of the realm of possibility. As the current ordinance dictates now, you have to be an owner. And so that sort of excludes folks that may want to partner with other businesses. What we've found in the area is Lamar advertising. If I could share my screen, I will do that from here and just show you the great majority of billboards are owned by Lamar advertising. And so if we look at Highland Springs Avenue to the 79, that represents about 23 two-sided signs. And so there are some one-offs in there where individual property owners own uh, billboards. They could partner with Lamar or with someone else to meet the ratio and allow a relocation.
And within your ratio proposal, do you have any type of distance between one to another within your proposal?
We do, I believe we're proposing at this point, at, at your discretion, at the council's autonomy, a thousand feet buffers?
Between each?
Between them, yes. I know that you, Ucaipa, I believe there's anywhere between three and 500 feet for certain billboard, so we'd be above what's in the area.
Okay, and last question with this is that, uh, this is only for, uh, current owners. There's still a, no new billboard, I believe, on the books.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and that's all for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, can you bring up the first slide with the, uh, option one? Oh. There you go. So actually, 2023 was when we last addressed this, but we first addressed it many, a number of years before that. Um, and we took the approach that we weren't going to do anything. Um, in the meantime, both of our neighbors are, are been, um, putting up new billboard signs and, and getting the benefits of that. If I understand what you're showing me here is the two blue dots in the lower left-hand corner are Beaumont points. And the two yellow dots in the middle are, is Target or Regency, correct?
In the lower left, that would be Beaumont Point. The other is, is not quite yellow, I believe. It's just a white likely location. It could be the Petrero Boulevard exit where there's a potential to, to locate. But yes, Beaumont Point, lower left, and Target, well, Oak Valley Village at Oak Valley.
And so the blue area is, is telling us what? That even though the yellow dots are there or the white dots are there, that they could put something else in that blue dot as long as it's within or more than a thousand feet?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you show me the next one?
Sure. Is that potential?
Yeah, the one that has all the pretty red dots. That one there?
Yes.
Okay, so we've had this ordinance in place for three years now. How many of these, uh, billboards have been taken down?
None. These are the current billboards.
And so we're thinking about going to four?
Correct.
So no one wants to do a one-for-one, but someone might want to do a four-for-one? Well, now it's gonna drop four of their billboards for one digital billboard?
That's correct.
That's not gonna happen. I, I get so frustrated with this because it just keeps coming back to us. It's not your guys' fault, but it just, I think it's our fault. Cause it keeps coming back to us with the approach that we just don't want them here. And I think, I think, I mean, and then, you know, you talk about an overlay of a couple of blue areas that include ones that we've already agreed we have to do, or we've agreed that we're gonna do. Um, and then you brought up a good point where, uh, for example, I, I would imagine one of these red dots, is it the Highland Springs one? Or the, uh?
The welcome to Beaumont Center?
What's, nah, there's one right behind, um, like home depot. And it's, it, it, it's the, um, the ranch, uh, the lavender ranch, right? They have a, they have a billboard. Is that one of these that you're calling a static billboard?
Is that the one that says welcome to Bo right now?
No.
No.
Oh.
Now, you guys know which one I'm talking about, right?
It's a static.
Yeah, it's a static billboard. Now, if, if a developer wanted to come in, I mean, a billboard developer came in and went to Highlands, uh, to the lavender ranch or whoever's billboard that is, and said, look at, you know, I'll, I'll make a deal with you. You take that down and I'll put mine up. But they can't do that because it has to be an owner taking it down and an owner putting it back up.
Well, currently it does.
Right. Um, if, if our problem is the area in the lower right-hand corner where all the red darts, red dots are, why don't we do an overlay there that says in this area, you can't put up anymore unless you take one down? And open it up to, um, not having to be an owner. But why, why wouldn't we? And, and this is not a question for you guys, a question for you guys. Why wouldn't we allow people to put up a billboard along the, you know, along the ten between, uh, Oak Valley and Cherry Valley?
You're, is, is, I don't know, I, you're assuming that you would want one or want more billboards?
A digital billboard, sure we do.
You do.
I, I think, I think there's a benefit to the city to have those. And, and again, to bring up the, the issues that, that keep killing this is the bright lights. And I mean, th- these billboards are not that bad. They're not bright lights. I mean, I remember the first discussion we had, you could see one from your office.
Right.
That was 10 miles away. Well, people aren't gonna be seeing billboards 10 miles away when they're on the freeway. I just, I think, I don't, I don't know why we're doing this again, because the direction we're gonna go again is, uh, we'll just make it really hard for anyone to, to do anything, and no one is taking these down. So I don't know what our billboard sign policy, what the benefit of it is.
Has anybody reached out to Lamar?
We have not, Mayor Proton.
So we don't, I mean, Lamar might not even know about this change or the sop- option.
I think, well, I think Lamar knows that a digital billboard, number one, is, they can make more money off of it.
Well, right.
Number two, it's safer because they don't have people getting up there and making changes. If they make the changes electronically, digitally.
Yeah, it's safer.
Yeah.
But is the ownership requirement, the ownership of Lamar's?
Lamar would have, if Lamar wanted to put a digital up, they'd have to take one of their.
Static down.
Static down.
So wouldn't you think that if we were going a one-for-one, we would have seen some movement on that in the last three years?
Yeah.
They're expensive.
So why, why, why haven't they moved on it? I guess is my question, because Lamar could have one, two, three, four, five, six, that, you know, 20 of them.
But why should they? Because they already have 80% of those.
I, I just think it begs a question. If, if it was so lucrative or if they wanted to do it, why hasn't somebody done it in the last three years? Or two years?
Cause you have the wood, you have the wood ones up there that are already there. Why, why go into the extra cost? And they have no competition at all. There's no other developer who's gonna come in and put up a, a digital sign, so why should they? Yet, yet they're, they're becoming very popular on everywhere outside of Beaumont. So I, again, you know, we, we, we approved the Beaumont Point, we gave them billboards. We appro- we approved the Regency, we gave them a billboard. But we can't, no one else gets them. I just, I, I'm just frustrated because I, I don't understand why we don't see the, the opportunity. There is, um, I think my understanding with one of the Ucaipa ones is that the, uh, City Ucaipa has a contract with the sign. They provide some revenue each year. It also provides them in, I think it's the Banning One, I think Ucaipa as well. It gives the Chamber of Commerce the ability to, to highlight a different business once a month. Um, I, I just, you know, we talked about having one to, to highlight our events, our Cherry Festival events. Um, and at this point, we're paying money to put it on other billboards, yet we don't, you know, it's sort of like understanding that you have to allow cannabis, but we want someone else to be growing it. And so here it's like, okay, well, we don't need billboards, but we're gonna put money into putting our ads up on somebody else's billboard. And we have, we have property where we could put a city on. And, and I've looked into it, doing a city billboard doesn't make sense. It makes sense to have a billboard developer put it up and then, uh, create a contract with the city that provides the city benefits. Um, the gentleman, um, the one that, with the old Beaumont sign, you know, he's, he, I think, agreed to, to provide us some incentives, or at least he was talking about, cause he's, he has the Banning Ones. And he provides the, uh, chamber, uh, the ability to advertise for some of their businesses. But I just, I, I don't know why this, I don't know why what you're showing us tonight is, is not status quo.
Wait, I mean, I, I, I think for me, the overlay option, I think, is a great option. I think it gives us the opportunity to say, hey, in these areas, I, I'm okay with expanding the, the areas in which the overlay go and are not just specific to the, on and off ramps. Um, you know, the one around the Biz Hub or, um, you know, the 79 there. I, I think we have opportunity to expand it along the freeways. My concern is near residential areas that I don't want it to be oversaturated with them. I think the thousand feet probably gives us some of that. Um.
Can't you make it a conditional use that comes to us and we can say, no, that one's too close to that one?
That's a suggestion.
Yeah, uh, uh, what do you call it, um, variance, maybe?
The variance is a mechanism you could use to address inequities or things that don't meet your standards.
So I, I may be in the, the minority on this, but, um, I'd like to stick with option two. Um, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. I had a coffee with the mayor. We had 150 attendees at, uh, Solera. Uh, of the 150 attendees, two were in favor of additional billboards. Um, and they, they referenced the revenue, uh, potential. So there's 148 noes. So when we talk about the community, what the community wants, it doesn't sound like it's based on that. And folks that I've talked to that are, are interested in additional billboards. Um, so, and I think, do we have ideas on potential revenue? I got some information maybe on a billboard, depending on the, the agreement, uh, the DA agreement or whatever agreement we have, could be upwards of maybe a hundred thousand annually, potentially, depending on the company and what they would.
Yes, I mean, it, it's anecdotal in terms of what I've, what I've seen and because of different cities, different areas, different, uh, traffic counts. And there's different options to consider, but could be anywhere from 500 to 2,000 a month, it could be more. But based on the revenue of a certain trending area, there's some significant differences between more urban areas.
Okay, um, so I, I took a drive down the, the 10, uh, within the Beaumont city limits in the area. When you look at a billboard, cause I, my numbers are closer to yours than the 37, is, a billboard is just one face, correct? A, a lot of them have the monopole with the V-shaped sign, and so you've got two billboards, right? So is that, so when we say four to one, are we talking four poles or four faces? Does that make sense?
Yes, we would indicate four faces, but it could be subject to what the council would like to see. If you'd like to see four structures and see how that goes, you can do that. But our intent was for four faces to be replaced for one digital billboard.
Could you go to the one slide that has, who, yeah, the, the one you, that one? So I, I know Ucaipa is all four, but the rest of our neighbors don't appear to be supporting billboards. Uh, Moreno Valley has a prohibition on billboards. One of their concerns is the, the aesthetic harm, which is one of my concerns, as well as the, um, substantial hazard to traffic safety by the very nature that they create. This is out of their, their ordinance. Um, and they reference a court case, Metro Media Inc. versus San Diego. So those are some of the concerns, and I noticed that when we look at our, the overlay proposal, we don't do anything on 79. Is that, is there a reason we don't, we're not looking at 79?
We were just originally intending on the freeways. Uh, 79 is a major highway.
Okay.
But again, the council could, could expand or constrict areas.
Okay, um. And the, the other concern that I have, and, and I, that's why I do like the, maybe not a, a four-to-one ratio, that's, that's heavy ratio. But, um, maybe a, a two-to-one ratio is, we have a really heavy concentration of billboards, at least, just giving you my opinion. Um, between Highland Springs and Pennsylvania, seems to be a, a heavy concentration there. And then that's when you're going westbound, and then coming eastbound, you have a heavy concentration between Oak Valley and Sixth Street. Um, so it'd be nice to kind of get, you know, with the electronic billboard ordinance, to be able to lighten those areas up so we can. Cause the concern, if we do a one-to-one, then that heavy concentration just becomes a heavy concentration of electronic billboards, which is concerning. Um, and, um, so that, so I was looking at, at maybe a, a two-to-one, um, in those areas. But the, the, the other question I have too is, you know, we, we, we talked about one-to-one and that nobody's doing this or nobody's coming to us, but we gave the guy in Highland Springs permission to do a billboard, what, two years ago? And we still haven't gotten anything. So I, I don't, I don't know what his holdup is, but it, I mean, he has freedom to go and he's not going. So I don't know, um, what the issue is with him. But again, the concern that I have is that the, seems to, well, at least from the folks that I've talked to, don't seem to be very supportive of having additional billboards. And so that's why I would look at maybe option two with a change from the one-to-one to a two-to-one. That's my comments for right now. Uh, Councilmember Martinez, sorry?
Well, um, so I think when it comes down to is really a question of balance. I mean, I believe the council has a duty to balance the, um, ability to promote economic growth, but we also have a duty to the residents to, um, to answer how they want their city to look. I don't think we, I don't like the one-size-fits-all approach. I think the one-to-one's outdated. I think we need to readjust that. But I would like to keep the authority, um, at the council level. I like the idea of coming to us and saying, here's where we propose to put an electronic billboard. Let's look at it and let's see if it makes sense. We can use the overlay as a guide to our decision. Um, but I think if we start looking at, oh, this is okay, we should have two-to-one here. And if we look over here, then this is saturated, we'll be just sitting here going back and forth all day. Because I don't think we're gonna come to a consensus of what everything should be if we try to come up with a policy of a one-size-fits-all, whether it's two-to-one, a four-to-one, a thousand feet. I think that's stuff that we can use when we discuss each project as they come forth. So if the project comes forth, then we look at it and we discuss, is it within a feet? Is it within that? Does it make sense? What's static, what's not? And then we come to a consensus of whether we believe that that's the right location for that project. Now, it brings legality questions that, that I would have. Um, you know, the right to regulate that. I'm not sure how that's written. When Mr. Pinkney, uh, first discussed this with us a while back, we had talked about using, uh, revenue from the signs. We had talked about putting our, um, stuff from the city on there. And, and he had talked and cautioned about what we could do and couldn't do. You know, we couldn't say you could put your sign if you let the city put so many ads on there. We couldn't really generate from that, you know, and there were some parameters that, you know, we probably need to bring back and discuss as far as what we can do and what we can't do as a city. Um, but I still think overall, the approach should be, I believe, to keep the regulation here so that we can look at each one on an individual level. Because if we're trying to come up with one-size-fits-all policy, we're gonna find flaws. If we say thousand feet, then you're gonna say, well, they put one here, you really can't put one over here, but it should go there. But it's, you know, within the thousand feet, we can't. Or you're gonna say over here, let's do a four-to-one, is it three-to-one? And I think we just start kind of coming up with so many minutia facts that you really aren't gonna find something that satisfies everyone or that makes sense for the city. So if we take that approach, and I don't know how it's written, like I said, and how we put that in ordinance, but you bring it to us, just like a DA agreement, you say, okay, they have a proposal to put this size of a sign here. Let's look at it, see if it makes sense. And, um, whether they have four signs in town and they're putting a new one up, to me, it doesn't matter. To me, it matters where it's going. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about, would I allow four signs to be all in a row? Probably not. But would I allow the owner of those seven signs to put a new one somewhere else? Why not? It doesn't matter to me that they already own some and they want another one somewhere. To me, it's where that sign's going. Does it make sense there? What's going around it? And if someone later comes and wants to put one of their own on the other corner, does that make sense? And we use that to evaluate each time something comes up. Now, I know it's difficult because, you know, councils change and so forth and opinions change, but I still think that's probably, to me, the most prudent approach, rather than trying to come up with something that's a one-size-fits-all. Because I know we're gonna find flaws and that we're gonna go back and say, oh, we didn't think about that. That's gonna allow that person to have it, but that can't. And it makes sense for them to have it, but the ordinance prohibits it. So that's my two cents. And again, I don't know how that's written. Um, but doing a, a one-on, uh, one-on-one individual basis is, is my suggestion.
So your suggestion is that there's no prohibition on digital billboards within the city of Beaumont? They are specifically conditioned by the council?
All electronic billboards must come to the city for approval, council for approval, period. And if we say there's too many, then we say there's too many. Or if there's too many in one location, then we, and again, that's the part legal, we'll have to weigh in and see what we can do and what we can't do. But if we have that authority to regulate that, then, you know, why put a number up if you're only getting one or two at a time, and right now we're not getting any? But that doesn't mean we can't. So I can't use that excuse because we could very well have six tomorrow. But if we do get six requests tomorrow, where are they going? What are they gonna look like? And then let's take each one of them and see what makes sense.
So first come, first served basis?
Well, it would be a first come, first served, sure. So if you come up and it makes sense and we approve it, there you go. And if somebody says, oh, boy, I want one next to them, then we can, we, again, we're gonna have a guiding principle. We can't just willy-nilly come up with why you can't or can't have it. But we'll have procedures like, well, overall, we believe it shouldn't be thousand feet. And overall, it should be probably somewhere within an off-ramp or on-ramp. And overall, it shouldn't be. And those are the kind of things we look at as we decide for each one.
So guiding principles?
Guiding principles, policies, however you wanna call them. Um, but I think there's so many unique things that are coming up our way that we have to be careful, because if we limit too many, it's gonna come into a problem. Because we're not sure what's coming our way. Now, we, if we're just looking at what's there now, and we're trying to say, oh, boy, I don't want all of those being electronic. Well, then again, that's what we say. If one of those red dots come and says, hey, I want this electronic, then we can take a look at it and say, does it make sense? Is it too close to Highland? Is it too close to another one? No, 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 okay, I think it's okay. And then if someone in the other red dot comes forth, then we start pulling our policies and say, well, how far is it to the other one? What's the benefit to the community? Is it a distraction? You know, all these things that we can start discussing. And again, I don't know if that's too subjective or not, but I think if we have some sort of policies down where we guide ourselves, I think we should be covered. But again, that's a legal thing that I'd like them to weigh in to see at some point, you know, what is it we could and couldn't do. Anyway, my two cents. Coffee kicked in, that's why.
Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you. So I got a couple of questions. So for Beaumont Point, as part of the development agreement, they're allowed to put in a billboard, but it's not necessarily an electronic one? Is that right?
It's, it's electronic, but it's for advertising the property, the tenants?
So it's a monument sign or?
Electronic monument.
An electronic monument sign?
It's an onsite.
It's an onsite.
Okay, so, so then, different, different conversation then?
Yes.
Okay. So then, not being part of the Regency conversation, and the, the, you've got a map where it shows a future electronic one, was there an electronic billboard as part of that development agreement?
For Oak Valley Village, Regency Center, yes.
Okay.
That's to be, it, it was contemplated and it should be considered by planning commission for recommendation to the city council ultimately. Because it's part of the DA.
If Regency and our Highland Springs guy follows through, then we will have two electronic billboards in Beaumont, correct?
But not advertising, only advertising onsite?
Onsite, yeah.
Onsite amenities, so not?
That's just the Regency one then?
Beaumont Point apparently is electronic message for onsite. Oak Valley Village, your most recent, is for offsite. It is a billboard. And there was, there was a rendering of a potential billboard that could be erected there. So again, not necessarily considered, but it was contemplated in the DA. So that is an offsite electronic billboard at Oak Valley Village or the Target Center.
Okay. And then that same thing applies for the Highland Springs one, that's an existing billboard, and he can put any message up, you know, once it goes electronic, okay?
Yes.
So nothing official by any means, but when I have noticed and looked at the advertisements on, in the City Ucaipa on the 10 for those electronic billboards, I see more and more local businesses. The static ones seem to be out-of-area businesses, like injury attorneys and whatnot. So I think if we're trying to go with an aim of trying to help and grow local businesses, especially Beaumont ones, I think you have an advantage of having the electronic ones. But I like the electronic ones at the edge of town as you're coming in. And I, and I don't wanna see any new ones either, so I like the replacement factor. Um, but I think, to me, it would make sense, you have one coming into town each direction on the freeway. Perhaps Beaumont Point area on the 60. Um, I understand the Oak Valley one because the Cherry Valley intersection is beyond, you know, our city limits, but it could be near the Brookside, you know, bridge. Um, and then we've already have the electronic one at the Highland Springs. So I like what, um, Councilmember Martinez talked about is having a discussion with each one that comes in. But I'd be afraid if somebody's saying, hey, you're unfair to me, you allowed Johnny over there to do his, but I came in with what I thought was a better plan, and you told me no. Um, but I also see that, look, looking at the chart you put up with Redlands, and they don't allow any, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so if they can get away with that, then I would think that we would be okay with picking and choosing of what we felt that's best. Um, so I think there should be a limit on the electronic billboards. I see the benefit for it, but I think the location of those should be as you're coming into town. So my comments for now.
Mayor, I have another question.
Mayor Proton White, sorry?
For those that are along the Highland Springs and the Pennsylvania Avenue area where they're saturated, are those currently situated on private land that is potentially developable? And then what happens when that is developed?
They are on land that could be redeveloped or potentially developed. And it would be the consideration of if it were a discretionary permit or entitlement for the planning commission or the city council to look at what the non-conforming status would allow. So there could be an amortization period that would be anywhere from 40 to 50 years before they'd have to, once we observe that it is a, a, a structure that's either not permitted or has a permit. If it has a permit, it's good for in perpetuity, it's not allowed, we could do about it. If it's found that it's no permit, legal non-conforming status comes into play. It could be 40, 50 years before the city could compel someone to remove a sign. And so it would really need to be looked at case by case. And in some cases, that would be appropriate to say, you know, this is discretionary review, if it were a discretionary review, let's consider removing it. And it would be up to the property owner to either agree or disagree, and then the city to agree or disagree to approve a project. Just really case by case, I apologize, a long answer.
No, that's okay. And I'm trying to follow you all the way through it. And I think what I'm hearing is we would need to understand the permitted.
Correct, the status.
The status of each of them to understand what that looks like.
So in cases where they're permitted, obviously, they have a building permit, it's good in perpetuity. If there's no permit, and there are some, there could be, again, a legal, a non-conform, I hate to say legal non-conforming, it's just non-conforming status that we'd have to address.
I think what I'm trying to wrap my mind around the whole thing is, what's the impetus for the conversation? Are there people outside within the community that are saying, I want to bring this here, but I can't bring it here? And if they are saying? And if they are saying they can't bring it here, why can't they bring it here? I think that's the piece I'm missing right now.
Yes, there are.
Okay.
And they're saying, I can't bring it here because I don't own one that I can take down.
Okay. And so do they have potential places they could put one?
Yes.
Okay. So if they have, so the problem is whether or not we can erect a new one?
The code prohibits erecting a new one without taking one down. Has to be the same owner.
Has to be the owner.
So... What's that?
We can change that if we went to, you know, the authority and you open it up to new ones.
So, and I think that that's what I'm struggling with is, I think opening it up to the possibility to do it, I think where I'm struggling with is whether or not I feel that it should be, how we create that to be our sole discretion without putting so much red tape in it and creating so many hoops that business owners have to get through in order to get something accomplished. I don't wanna be the limiting factor. Sure.
Just, the only comment I have on that is that it's something of this nature. Normally, if it was something like a business license or something, yeah, we wouldn't wanna put more red tape and make it more cumbersome. But I think this is so different because there's so much involved with it that I don't have a problem having that little extra layer coming to us to make sure that it's done properly.
But could we not argue that this is someone's business?
What do you mean?
Like, that the billboard is their business?
Well, it is their business, but it's also our duty to the constituency to make sure that the town is the way they prefer their town to be. So we can't just say, you know, open, everybody come in, do what you want to promote business. Because you've already heard from the mayor, and I've heard very similar. It's like, well, we don't want it to be a Vegas, and we don't want it to have everything. That's why if we keep that control, we can keep that control by saying, okay, we're gonna balance the need to promote, you know, economic, but we're also gonna listen to you and not oversaturate your city. That's why a one-size-fits-all doesn't work. And for that reason, you have that little extra red tape that, yes, you have to make a proposal and whatever the procedure turns into in order to get to us to finally get there. But I think people would be willing with the price of these types of signs, I think whoever owns them would be okay going through that extra red tape to get something up, rather than just being turned down and saying, no. Because I don't see that many of them coming.
Yeah, I think that was, that was part of my concern on there. I do wanna mention just something, because it's not sitting right with me either, is I think that sometimes when we go out and elicit feedback, the way in which it's proposed can often elicit a response that we are requesting. And so I am concerned that if we brought this up at a meeting with the mayor, that potentially, I don't know the nature in which it was proposed. So can I take that as valid data? I don't feel that I can at this point. Because I was not there or privy to that information, nor do I think that it is... Trying to remember if it's subjective or objective data. But I don't really think that I can take that as valid data at this point because I don't know that there wasn't bias added in at this point, as much as I want to.
Councilmember White?
Real quick, did I request this item?
Yes.
I did?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why I did, but, yeah, you know, if I lived in Four Seasons and someone asked me, do I wanna put another billboard up with these other 20? Yeah, I'd say, hell, no. Do I wanna put one up way over here? Is that okay? I think that might be a different, a different story. So with the current status quo, one-for-one, Lennar could take down, and that's, we don't say one face in our, we say one sign. So they could take down, I think they probably own seven or eight of those, if, and probably more than that.
It's 22.
So they could take down seven or eight of them and put up seven or eight digital billboards with the status quo, and we can't fight that. So instead of seven or eight static, we have seven or eight digital with both sides. So I don't think the status quo makes sense at all. And then, at four-to-one, they would have to remove, if they removed two, they could only put up one, right? And then, what is happening with Alex's billboard? Because when I asked him a while back, he said he was still having issues getting it, getting it moving through. I don't know if it was because of the lease of the old building. I don't know if it was because he was jumping through hoops here. But just to assume that he doesn't have it up when it would make him a lot of money, it doesn't mean that he doesn't want it up. And when I talked to him probably five, six months ago, it was, well, I'm working on it. I just, you know, got hoops to jump through.
I can't say what those hoops are, but we can, we can research that. I don't believe, without looking at the planning log, where we could say he is in the planning process right now. He did get approval from city council, and I thought he was going to move quickly, but it...
I think some of it has to do with taking the old one down.
That might be.
Because I don't know that he actually owns that. He leases the property. So, yeah, I, again, I, you know, I, I don't know why I brought this back up because I don't think it would go anywhere anyways.
You can't say that.
No, I did say that. But again, our overlay is overlaying the ones that have already been approved. There's no new ones there.
No, there are new ones. There's a potential Biz Hub, there's a potential one at Petrero, there's a potential one where they would be annexed.
We approved two signs at Beaumont Point.
We approved two monuments, I believe, and one has a, one has a digital component to it. So I do think that there are other ones. I would be for council discretion. I would be for it.
So, I like what you're talking about as far as the discretion. I think what can happen, though, is you'll have somebody that could invest thousands of dollars on a potential sign that may go nowhere. Because there's not, there's no parameters in which to say that, oh, well, whatever I do, I may get approval or I may not. So it's a crapshoot, and they may, you may not get anybody to submit because they don't wanna spend thousands of dollars to prepare something with elevations and everything and then not get any approval or have it all be for naught. So I think we need, you know, written guidelines or an ordinance of some kind to be written. And then in regards to public input, and I can appreciate, you know, the potential bias, Mayor Protim Voight, but the concern that I have is anytime that we get any feedback from anybody, then we wouldn't take that from any council member because of a potential bias.
No, I think the difference in this one is that there were 150 people in a room, and the question could have been asked, do you want digital billboards without any other context? And to me, that's eliciting totally different information. That's not giving a full story, that's not potentially doing everything. And that's an assumption on my behalf, and I recognize that.
And driving through, doing the count, looking at, right now, I mean, except for the areas that you have the heavy congestion, you've got the beautiful mountain sites, the views. And I know we're not talking about sticking 1,000 billboards and making it look like Las Vegas, but we do have a number of billboards that could be converted. They haven't been on a one-for-one basis. I do not, I'm not comfortable with the one-for-one. I think any revision moving forward would have to have a two-to-one or a three-to-one or whatever that is. But again, I'm not looking to support additional billboards in our city, our city elevated, so.
And do we have more comments, or do you want to...
How's that for direction?
That's no, that's no direction, but... Tiles comes to mind.
Who do we say was the major owner? Is it LaMotta?
22, yeah.
22, yeah.
Yeah, I think, and I think that when I was asking the question earlier about the 22 billboards, you know, who's owned them, why haven't they come in to ask us those questions? Or why haven't they even inquired on replacing one? But I think you guys answered that. It's probably expensive to replace them, so then that's what led to the next question of, well, do we have people asking to come and do it? And the answer is yes. So if we have one company that's not doing it, but I see them with billboards down in Fontana and everywhere else that are digital, why, the question then begs, why aren't they doing that here in Beaumont? So why isn't that changing? And I feel like I almost need more information from them as to why aren't they doing that? But I also don't wanna open up a can of worms to say, hey, you can come do them one-to-one.
Right. So, you know, back to my thought. The issue with the billboards is really Pennsylvania to Highland Springs. So why don't we do a Pennsylvania-Hiland Springs overlay? And here's the rules there, it's a one-to-four, you have to take it down. And then the other areas can be a conditional use coming back to council. You could put four-to-one in that area. You could put eight-to-one in that area. Nothing's gonna change, you're still gonna have those 20-some there.
But if we change it to all electronics have to come to us for approval, then we maintain whether we want all static there.
You could make different, different rules for that area that doesn't require it to come to us. But, you know, you're bringing up ideas about people investing and then that money not coming to fruition because they don't get a, and you're bringing up the idea about the city being able to give concern, conditional use on these things? We already do that with businesses. We do that with development. We do that with houses. We do that with warehouses. So I don't know why any of that is, you know, those folks come in and spend millions knowing that they may never get their project built.
And most of those companies already have some pre-done plans.
But I think also those static billboards is, I think it was, I don't remember, it was David or who, one of you two brought up the concept that they're all local businesses.
Electronic.
Yeah, the static ones here, they get much more money from an national company than they would from a local business. So again, I don't see any incentive for these to change. And yet, we're making this rule for that little area apply to the entire city. That was my issue why I brought this back, was there are areas along the 10, along the 79, along the 60 that you could do that.
Did we get a little further in this conversation than last time?
I agree.
We talked less, and we get nothing done.
What do you guys think about that idea? Taking that chunk, making different conditions for that chunk, and then opening the rest up for traditional...
Personally, I don't like dividing it down. A thought I had and a question for staff is, if we removed the one-for-one and we just left it to where anything with billboards needs to come to council, would that, would that be a detriment for people to want to come for changes? Or do you think it would encourage them to come to say, hey, I have this plan, I'd like to put an electronic billboard here, and then we can consider it? So if we drop the one-for-one requirement, then let's see what, you know, is it, are we opening ourselves up for problems? Or now do we have somebody that's willing to come and do something, and then we can, the council can then can make a decision? But any, but maybe the policy is, any billboard decision has to come to council, and we just leave it at that?
I think if we put together a good guideline, like we do with all of our other development, that anything that, any of these would have to come to planning. But to bring everything to, all these billboards to council, someone else brought up the point, councils change. I think there should be more of a guideline that, that, you know, if you don't agree with planning, like we do with the others, you can appeal to council. But to make everything come to council, I just think, what about doing something like you can only have two or three within a two-mile stretch of the freeway? That wipes out most of them that are there, I don't know.
That's why I don't see a problem coming to council because we'll just sit here and debate numbers, two, three miles, one mile, one mile, three, six here, 1,000, 150. I don't think we can do a one-size-fits-all.
But that's what we have now.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Well, some like it. 148 people at Four Seasons liked it.
Something I'll add is, I don't wanna see any new billboards. And so I like the idea, if somebody wanted an electronic one, can we make one go away? But I would think any electronic billboards coming in, they're not gonna wanna be in the spots that the static billboards are in. I think they're gonna wanna be in other locations. So again, I'd like, and I'm okay if it's in a nice spot, you know, and again...
But then it adds to the number.
Yeah, and then it adds to the overall number. So then we added something, and I personally don't wanna see more. And I've heard a good number of people that say there's too many here already. But I like the idea of the electronic billboards and the local businesses advertise on those because they're cheaper because they get the little flash advertisements, you know, versus, you know, the, being up there the whole time and have that high cost. And so it's the national companies that are on the static billboards. So I kinda see both sides, but I don't wanna see more.
The issue is that there're gonna be two different people, right? So the person wanting to come in and put up the electronic billboard is not gonna be the same person that needs to take it down.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's the problem we run into with the one-for-one.
Yeah.
So if I could make a suggestion, I think we've given you guys a lot to think about. And if you can put down some ideas of what we talked about, I don't know that we need to keep talking about this tonight.
We're done?
I think we've expanded.
Do you have, I don't know, do you have some direction?
Let's see what their creative minds bring back to us.
I do. I believe we have some ideas. Seaman Duh?
We do, just as long as everyone agrees we don't have clear direction.
No, which means we get to bring it back again.
And have it all over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to legislative updates and discussions.
Mayor, there is none.
Okay, and economic development update?
None.
City treasurer report is none. City clerk report? City attorney report?
Thank you. I did wanna report at the last council meeting, I believe it was councilmember White that had requested that there be an update to the hardship waiver deposit form as consideration for granting that waiver, that there would be a release of liability. I just wanted to advise the council that that has taken place. We've updated the form to reflect that language.
Okay.
The hardship deposit waiver form that we were talking about at the last meeting. Was it related to the helmet?
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Seaman Duh report?
Before Darren gives a presentation on the strategic plan software that we now have on our website to track the strategic plan goal progress, I wanted to update council on some things that we've been doing internally here. So three of the departments got together, police department, the cops team, community services, public works, and a couple other individuals that helped out. And a couple months ago, they started a homeless encampment cleanup. And all by law, notices were given, statutory regulations were followed and things like that. But I am happy to report that as of today at 5:00, our cop sergeant, which is our community-oriented policing, has reported, due to the outstanding work over the past few months, no encampments were located. So cops would go out the day before, do all of the notices, 24, 48, 72 hours, whatever the requirement is. And then the departments would all converge on those different encampments and clean them up. And so as of today at 5:00, we have zero homeless encampments in town. And we will continue to monitor those. I would like to thank all of the staff. Some of these encampments are extremely large, and they take a lot of man-hours and coordination. And so I'd like to publicly thank the staff that are involved. That is not an easy job to do.
No.
But it is, it is to the benefit of the residents of Beaumont.
It is.
And I will turn it over to Darren, and he's going to do a three-minute presentation on something that's going to launch out on social media tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Julie?
Tomorrow.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. So if I can have my screen shared, please? So here's the city's website, and so we have the, with the help of Julie and her team, we have created a strategic plan webpage within our website. And so there's two ways that you can go to this page. The first one is under the government tab. There is strategic plan here, and then if you were to scroll down on the main page at the very bottom, there is a strategic plan button here. Once you click it, it takes you to the actual plan, where it has both the PDF that was approved by council earlier this year, as well as the dashboard through our, the contractor that we're using, which is called Invisio. That's the strategic plan software that we implemented all of the goals that were approved into that dashboard. The dashboard load is located right here, and the PDF is located right above. Once you click this, it'll take you to the public dashboard, where it shows City of Beaumont Strategic Plan 25 to 27. And then these are the five goals that were approved by council. Communications and relationship, infrastructure projects and traffic, economic development, downtown revitalization, financial stability and resource development, and quality of life. You can click into one, for instance, infrastructure projects and traffic. It gives a brief summary of what this is, as well as all of the different goals that were set by council. And on the right, you show a progress, a percentage of how complete it is, as well as the status bar, if it's on track, if there's a completion percentage, as well as if there's any hurdles or obstacles on that goal. You can dig further deep into it, so once you click it, it then shows the actions that staff and council are taking to complete that goal within the strategic plan. As you guys are aware, CIP projects usually are multiple years, so it's not uncommon to see this goal maybe next year as the strategic plan moving forward. And it's pretty easy to navigate back and forth, as there's the little home button here. You would click that, and it would take you back to the home screen where you're able to explore the other goals as well. And the frequency of this update is bi-weekly, and we set timers to update the dashboard, so it'll automatically update even through weekends, holidays. And so staff is the one that goes in, updates it, it's usually the analysts, with the progress that is made by either staff, the contractors, or the vendors that we're partnering with for each of these goals. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Good job.
Julie confirmed it'll go out to the public tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Future agenda items? Yeah. Workshop for that? Go ahead.
Can't be till 2026, so he has no vacation.
Council reports. Councilmember Finn?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a big shout out, I appreciate all the work that went into the Second Street extension, and the ribbon cutting was nice today, and look forward to that road being officially open later this month. On the 27th, I attended the, our finance and budget meeting, and on the 23rd, I attended RTA's board meeting, and a quick overview from that. Ridership is up 6.2% month-to-month, year-over-year, but 2.4% up from this time compared to last year. So our COVID timeframe, I think, has finally passed, and we're getting more ridership on public transportation. And also for Veterans Day, in honor of those who have served our country, Riverside Transit Agency will be giving free rides to veterans on Veterans Day, November 11th, on all local commuter link, Go Micro, and Dial-a-Ride services. And also another plug for our Veterans Day parade, and hope to see everybody out there on Tuesday. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes, Mayor, very short. So RCA was canceled for November. I attended the financial audit committee. I met with Mayor Proton Voight and staff concerning the steering committee for the Economic Development Strategic Plan. The city cleanup event was very, very successful. I intended that for my own personal reasons, but it, I got to see a lot of staff out there and a lot of the youth helping from interact, and it was, it was really a well-oiled machine, so I really appreciated that, and I heard a lot of positive from that from the community. And again, the Second Street ribbon cutting ceremony this morning, this afternoon, very, very happy to see that cut through. And I, I heard some good stuff already, people anticipating that, so let's see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White? Mayor Proton Voight?
Nothing for me as well.
Again, thanks for the ribbon cutting, Second Street ribbon cutting. I attended the Monster Mash, um, excuse me, the trunk-or-treat. Tons of kids. It was, it was well-attended. It was nice to see Supervisor Gutierrez there. I think he's, I've seen him at more events than I've ever seen any other supervisor here. So it's great that he's so involved, it was nice to see him there. Staff did a great job, they had great displays, I will say. Winner was a Harry Potter truck, trunk. It was, but it was well-attended, thousands of kids, the line at 7:00 was still all the way down to the park, so great job for your staff. And that's all I have. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting at 10:07.